All right, this meeting of the Denble Township Board of Education is being held in accordance with the open public meetings act. Notice that this meeting is provided to the Daily Record and/or the Star Ledger of Morris County, has been delivered to the township clerk and has been posted on the bulletin board of the Board of Education office and each of the school buildings in the district. Roll call please.
Mr. Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Capello.
Here.
This is Lindsey.
Here.
Mr. Duarte.
Here.
This is Deluna.
Here.
Mr. Appaloni.
Here.
Congratulations, please.
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
So we have a couple of quick presentations tonight. We have Mr. Patterson from the DFW who's going to give out a couple of awards. We have Mr. Buculovich who's not here yet, the specialist presentation of him. And if you want to stay around, we're going to be discussing the preliminary budget as well. So first, if I may, I'll pass it over to Mr. Patterson.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here. We're going to talk about the Patriots Pen Essay Contest. Patriots Pen is a national patriotic essay contest sponsored by the Veterans of Armed Wars. Denble Post 2519 is the local sponsor of that award. There's also competition at the county, at the state, and at national level. In 2014, there were over 100,000 entries in the competition. In Morris County, we got 350 entries, of which 145 of them came from a combination of St. Mary's Prep and Valley View. The theme for this year's program is "Why I Appreciate America's Veterans." And let me tell you, on behalf of the veterans of our post, how much we appreciate and are humbled by what the students had to say about our veterans. What did they appreciate about our veterans? Almost every essay talked about sacrifice. And it was interesting, the sacrifice ran from being away from home, missing family, loved ones, and holidays, to a willingness to sacrifice their life, if necessary, to protect our freedom and to give other people in other countries the opportunities to enjoy the freedom that we have. The other thing they appreciated was courage, bravery, commitment, and service. I was fortunate enough to be one of the screeners of the essays, and I recruited my wife, who was a retired language arts teacher, to help me. And two things stood out as we first looked at the essay. The first thing, it was interesting to see how many students who came through Lakeview School mentioned in their essay the veterans program that had been holding up there for 21 years. They appreciated the opportunity to put on a program for the veteran, but they really appreciated the opportunity to go into the classroom and interact with the veterans, especially the older ones. The second thing that I noticed is the students that had a personal contact with a veteran. It was most often their grandfather, or memories they had about their great-grandfather, who fought probably in the Korean or World War II. Many of the eighth graders wrote about individual veterans, and they told stories about how they overcame adversity, whether it was adversity during a war, or whether there was adversity when they came home. I was so impressed by the students and the realization they have that so many of the veterans from Iraq and Afghanistan have come home with both physical and mental disabilities, and we need to do what we can to help them. Also was interesting that many students thought that we take men and women's service and our veterans for granted. The only time we think about our veterans is at Memorial Day and at Veterans Day. One of the students went as far as to say, now remember, the essays were written in October. He said, "It's a shame, in a country like this, that we seem to care more about Halloween than we do about veterans." Once again, these essays were wonderful. They really give you a good feeling about these students, and we thank them very much for their participation in this program. So at this time, I'd like to introduce some of our winners. Kriya? Congratulations. Thank you. Jack Nappaloni? Of all the essays that were written, Jack, I think, came up with one of the best closing lines that I can think of. Do you mind if I read it, or do you want to read it? Jack's closing, he said, "What a veteran is to me is a person that made a daring and brave commitment to sacrifice their life to keep others protected. Even though not all veterans went to war, they all left their families and friends behind to help keep our country safe. That is why I appreciate America's veterans." Thank you. Ashley? And I'm going to ask the last two winners to come up here together. Jack Simpson. The reason, Sarah, the reason I asked them to come up together is when the judges who we asked to make the final determination which essay we would pass on to the county, the judges either picked Sarah's or they picked Jack's. Those that picked Jack, pick Sarah's second. Those that picked Sarah, pick Jack's second. Everyone. So since we received about 40 percent of the county's essays, we requested permission to submit two essays this year to the county competition, and I'm happy to say that Jack's essay came in third in the competition. Thank you very much.
Paul, would you like to acknowledge your teachers there?
Yeah, I'd like to acknowledge Ms. Northrop, Ms. Wallach, the essays we're writing in their classes. Ms. Schmidt, unfortunately couldn't be here tonight, but they were also writing in her classes as well, so you guys did a great job. We thank you for taking the time off today.
We would thank you for your support. If we didn't have your support, this program would not be the success that it's been through all years.
Well, Mr. Patterson, before you go, can we get the kids up with you to have a picture taken? Any teachers, if you don't mind, please.
(inaudible)
I know, I'll draw a picture. Ms. Ryan, I think Steve could take one.
Are you guys, parents okay with this going in the newspaper, kind of beside the end?
How about the short guys in front, maybe?
Yeah, double row.
I say it as we, yeah.
Good. I took a few just to make sure.
Yeah, that's what I'm going to click.
Would you mind emailing those to me? I'll put together something. Thank you.
So, thank you again for coming out. I don't know if parents have been able to go to the Veterans Celebration at Lakeview. Certainly last year and a few years ago, and I know Don, you were there, I think Mike was there as well this year, right? Both of whom are veterans. The ceremony's fantastic, and I think with coordination with the DFW and everything at the school, I think it's a great sort of culmination to be able to have our kids write these essays and certainly have them recognized where. So thank you all.
I really appreciate it. Mr. Nappaloni, Jack Simpson wants something. I don't know if anyone's had a chance to see that.
Would Jack Simpson like to get up and maybe talk that through with us?
(inaudible)
Why don't you let me hold it, then you can explain how great over here is that. Here, come over here.
So this is what my great-grandfather used when he was in the Battle of the Bulge. He was taking pretty hard work, so this is like his form of writing, and he laid an article about (inaudible). (inaudible).
Appreciate you bringing it in.
Thank you, Jack.
Young man who was the winner of St. Mary's Prep, his great-grandfather, was also a veteran for the Battle of the Bulge.
Wow. Thank you again, Mr. Patterson. So in addition to that, we as, I think, the district are very lucky to have a lot of people who are willing to volunteer their time, volunteer their resources, and one of whom that I know who's in the back there, Mr. Vludovic, Dr. Vludovic, if you want to, just come up here for a second, because Vludovic will get. And I'll tell you, I've been very fortunate to work with him this year as it relates to the football program in town. But in addition to that, he makes a pretty significant donation to the schools. I don't know, Steve, if you want to elaborate on that a little bit.
Sure. Paul might know a little more about the history there, if you don't mind.
Yeah, Dr. Vludovic has, since I've been here, has donated money each year, sometimes a couple times a year, and the money initially, the first few years, went directly to helping us open our STEM lab room. So we directly put the money into the STEM to help, you know, with that program and the students. And the money's going directly to the kids with all the different things that Mr. Vludovic has allowed us to purchase for the STEM lab. So for that, we really appreciate it.
I'm very grateful, honored. I didn't need this. I want to actually give you another little (inaudible). No, seriously, I'm so privileged to have my kids go to this school. I have kids in, I have a son in Riverview and two here, so the STEM lab is a great, great. I've been here several times, seen it. The kids are great, and I'm very privileged and honored to be a part of this school for my kids.
Anyone who's come across, Mr. P knows that, or Dr. P knows that, he will absolutely give the shirt off his back for really anything, so we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
And this is a little certificate from Mark Spock. Says, "Thank you very much for doing this."
I'm really humbled. Thank you.
Thank you for noticing.
Seriously, I mean, I have a cool great principal, vice principal, and I think it's the new vice principal that's coming.
Okay.
So, I mean, it's just, it's a great honor to be part of this system, part of the (inaudible).
We'll be inviting you next week again.
(inaudible) my pleasure. Thanks for the Riverview, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, again, I certainly appreciate that. I know we have a few others who we recognize for shoving snow, for handing out ice cream. I wish we could probably recognize volunteers probably every day, every week of the school year. So last, certainly not least, for this meeting is we'll be discussing the preliminary budget. Some of your eyes may glaze over. I don't have any offense if you want to leave. Certainly, I'd love for you to stay and listen through, but it is a school night, and feel free to work your way out. Move up closer, get away.
Just a moment. Jack.
He's clearly, he's talking.
So.
(inaudible) the writing, the writing war. (inaudible). I think it's the last, or the beginning, I was (inaudible).
Thank you for coming. Thank you for coming. Thank you for coming. Simpson, thank you.
(inaudible).
So we'll be passing over to Mr. Duarte, if you will, to take us through the preliminary budgets.
We presented this budget at the last Board of Education meeting, and again, this is a preliminary budget.
Hey, Cindy, can we move the camera so they can, maybe you can pick it up on the camera as well?
We usually link it. It doesn't usually show up well because of the light in the, yeah.
It doesn't come up on the, but we'll have the presentation online.
Well, maybe we'll get your (inaudible).
Sure. So we, again, this is our preliminary budget phase two, and our first one we did at the last Board of Education meeting. We have at least one more, so maybe even two more, depending on whatever it takes to get the budget explained and everybody bought into the fact that these are the things that we need. So, I left this in there a slide because it shows that we do, this is a long thought out process that starts back in the fall by meeting with the administrators, listening to what their needs are, finding out any curricular changes that might take place, things that are going to go into the budget for the following year. For example, the new biology class, when we offer this, we're going to, we currently have plans for offering a high school bio class in the middle school. So there's funds in there for that. Those are the kinds of things that we ask about when we try to plan for the following year. So we're down to where we have our preliminary budget hearings and our finance committee discussing it, and then we move to, tonight, we would either adopt the budget, the preliminary budget tonight, or we'd go to a special meeting next Monday if we needed, but the last day that we can submit the budget to the county would be the 20th of March. So here are our goals for 2014-15. Our first goal is to basically improve the communications of the district between the Board of Ed and the superintendent and the public. So we have done many things in that area. We've, we've put out, we've increased our press releases. If you've noticed in the neighbor news, there have been many more articles on Denble Schools. We've increased our parent involvement with the Parent Academy for Student Success, which has had, since, in the three meetings, has had about 220 people attend, and we also post these meetings and other events on YouTube, which have had decent amount of hits. I think the last board meeting had about 80 hits, I think, the last time I looked, somewhere around that. Some of the board meetings have upwards of 150 and more hits, so we're getting, maybe it's like a more modern way of getting the public to be involved, rather than always assuming people will come to a meeting, but maybe there's another way, and this is the way to be trying to do it. So we're working on a lot of different things to improve communications. The second thing about data, that's something we're going to do forever. We collect data on students and look to see whether or not what we're doing is working, and what kinds of things that we can do to improve it. Then the last thing is really kind of an all-encompassing goal of trying to raise the bar in general. It's high expectations throughout the community and throughout the district. This is the budget at the bottom of the handout you have, at the bottom of the front of that green sheet. So as you can see through this budget, it talks about all the different expenses, and then it talks about how much the impact would be on the home size of the average in the town, and how much the increase would be for the 15, 16 school year, which would be a $65 increase on the average house. Is there anything we need to mention about this to John, or? I think that's.
I have a question.
Sure.
You have a more than a 1 percent increase from the 2014-15 budget to the 2015-16, goes from .87 to 1.89. That's pretty big.
Do you have a specific question or not, or are you just making a comment that it's a high?
Yeah, how do you justify it?
Hopefully, when I'm done speaking to you, you'll see the things that we're adding here to it.
So, Mr. Smith, you'll go through some of the specifics within the budget, so you'll have a sense of where the budget went.
So, again, this is also, this increase is a total budget increase, am I right, John?
Yeah, this is an annualized tax increase based upon the taxes that will be assessed to support the budget.
So these are some of the things that are in the budget. And again, this is the current budget. I will talk about some proposed changes I had that I put in to you on Friday, to the board members. So we have in there an increase of a supervisor. Again, there's going to be changes at the last slide that I have in there that I'm proposing here. We still have that bio, the class I spoke to you about. There's textbook needs. We have our technology projects and some staff for the summer, that actually, that staff, that staff number actually is less expensive to bring the person in to actually do the wiring that we need, instead of hiring somebody, instead of paying for the wiring We have some security upgrades. We have buildings and grounds. We have a staff member in there. We also have that study that would tell us whether or not we are ready to move away from those portable classrooms we have that are 12-years-old. We did remove some items here. We removed a gym floor at Riverview that we planned to phase in next year. We removed some of the vehicle, some of the vehicle line items. And at the bottom, this does also include a $20,000 reduction in the revenue side, on the revenue side, due to the fact that we are going to reduce the fee parents pay for extracurricular activities in the middle school and elementary school. So right now, the proposal would be, if, I'll tell you what happens now. If you do one club, or five clubs, or whatever you do, it's $150. The proposal would be move $150 to $75 for next year, which would be basically cutting it in half. If you do a sport this year and a club, five clubs and a sport, it's $150. Next year, I propose, if you do a sport, it would be $115. And my rationale there was sports, cheerleading, and play are much more involved and are more expensive to run than a club. Right now, if you just do math club, and you want to go and get some enrichment in math, you have to pay $150. So that would cut to $75. And then our, our sports and our cheerleading and things like that would have a $35 reduction, not half, but still would have a reduction. And in the elementary schools, we would cut the fee from $50 to $25. Basically, what this is, is a one-third phase out. So if we decide to phase this fee out over three years, this was, this is one-third of it, so it's a chunk of one-third. So it's about $60,000 in revenue that we bring in, and this would reduce it to 40, so we would lose $20,000 in revenue. Maybe next year, maybe next year we could take another third chunk out, and maybe we could reduce those numbers lower. Or maybe we decide that this is okay, these numbers. Questions about any of this so far? So the Buildings and Grounds Department, and, I mean, the Buildings and Grounds Department, actually, administration, and the Buildings and Grounds Committee came up with this list. These are the recommended lists that we brought to the committee, and the committee agreed with the fact that we, that they wanted to spread, spread out some of the money that we had listed for paving and site work into some of these other projects. Now, all the projects that are, I can't say all of them, but many of these projects are things in our long-range facilities plan. I'll tell you, like, some of them aren't there. Like, for example, refurbishing gym mats, that's not, that's not a capital expense, that's a maintenance item. Even screening a gym floor, that's not a capital expense, that's a maintenance item. So some of these items are not in the long-range facilities plan. Those are, those are all capital items. So some of the things, like oil remediation at Valley, that's not in our, in our LRFP either, am I right, John? That's not in the LRFP because it's, it's a remediation of an oil spill that occurred in 2001, so we need to, we need to remediate it. That's a big line item. We have some paving needs, district-wide. We have a $90,000 item in there to pave and curb and fix sidewalks. If you drive around, you can see that there's some, some damage and the things are aging, so we have a line item in there to replace that. We have, we have a problem at Lakeview. It doesn't happen all the time, but from what I've been told, it happens every year, every other year, or every third year, something like that, where there's a big downpour and the water rushes into the school. And I wasn't there because it was before my tenure here, but I believe there was about four or five inches of water, pretty much, in one of the hallways. Not that this happens all the time, but it shouldn't be something that we allow to happen every other, every three years. So we have a line item in there of $35,000 that we got an estimate from our engineering firm that brought the civil engineer out and said, "This is what you can do to improve that." We also have the cafeteria tables here in Valley View. Those tables have been, they're original tables from when the cafeterias built in the 70s. There's some, we put in here those isolation valves. So basically, in all of our schools, if we have a heating problem, like, I'll give you Lakeview, for example, we had a heating problem. We had, we went into a room in the morning and we see water coming out of one of the unit vents. Now, if this was in a, you know, this is a big building, you know, Lakeview is a very big building, we had to shut the heat off to two-thirds of the building. It just happened to be a day where it was only about 15 degrees out. So if we couldn't get the building quickly heated, quickly fixed, we would have had to cancel school because they couldn't keep the building open at 15 degrees. But we were lucky, we were able to cap it and fix it, but we don't have any isolation valves that just say, "You know what? This half of the hallway, those rooms are closed for now," which still would be an inconvenience, but an inconvenience we can overcome. We can't overcome two-thirds of the building being closed. That's just, just not even manageable. With 650 kids, where you're trying to move, say, 450 of those kids around, that would be a pretty big task, especially since some of them are, you know, a big portion of them are kids that are, you know, four, three, you know, it's not like they're high school kids where you can put them all in the auditorium and show a movie. It's a tough thing to do. So we also have these issues with the, with the fresh water. So for example, our water supply comes in and we don't have shut-off valves in the buildings. So it's happened a few times where you have a one-seat sink that's a problem, and they have to shut the water off to the whole building. Problem is, in a school, you can imagine with 700 kids and 700 people that used to use, need to use the bathroom, if it gets for an extended amount of time, it's probably not going to be something we can live with. So we have that. If you look closely at some of our buildings, you'll see that we have some maintenance air issues that are cropping up. The sofas need to be scraped, painted, and some of the wood needs to be replaced or wrapped in vinyl, or whatever you do. That number came right off our LRFP, too. At Riverview, we have fixing up those stairs that are on the north side, that's in the big parking lot. The stairs have been crumbling for a while now. That wall needs some repair, and it needs to be, you know, repainted and things like that. We also, even though I know we put a 900 and some- We also, even though I know we, we put a nine hundred and something thousand dollar roof on River View, we have a problem. It's not, we put roof, but it's not really the roof. It's, it's the fact that there's some wind-driven rain that is hitting this area that's between the two roofs. So our, our architect gave us this budget line to correct that. When, when you have a strong wind-driven rain, you get leaking in the all-purpose room. So this is the number to correct that. And then if you see, all that stuff adds up and we have five hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars in the budget for these types of repairs and projects over the summer. We also have a line item down the bottom, fifteen thousand dollars for architect fees. Things that are in this section here need to be sealed by an architect. That means we plans drawn up by an architect for the majority of these types of repairs. Even though it, it doesn't make sense to you that, you know, you see a door or just replacing the door. But if it's coming out of our capital reserve or it's in our capital budget, it needs to, it needs to have plans drawn up by our architect, even for a replacement like that. So we have funds in there for that. This is a, this is a property tax comparative group. I'd like to do, I'd like to use this for, for pretty much everything. We stick with this one group. The, the reason why, I, I'll explain to you what this group represents. This group is all K-eight districts in northern and central New Jersey, from Somerset County all the way to Bergen County. All K-eight districts of one thousand to three thousand students that are in what's called I factor. Back in about twelve, fourteen years, it was actually twenty-something years they did it, but then they revised it about ten years ago. The state came up with this thing called district factor groups. It included many different demographic things, finances of the town in terms of, of the population, education, marital status. It came up with a lot of different indicators. And the town of Denville is an I. The lowest towns in terms of socioeconomic status, in terms of wealth, are the As. An A district would be East Orange, Irvington, something like that, Ashbury Park. Your J's are your richest districts. Those are your M's. I like to call them the M's. Milburn, Montgomery, Mountain Lakes. Those are, those are your highest socioeconomic group in the J. So Denville's an I. And then in the Is, there's a big discrepancy, too. So you could see, bye, guys. So you can see that, you know, we're in, we're in the mix with some heavy hitter districts. Like, we have Frankel Lakes in there and Wyckoff. So we could be considered a little toward the bottom of this group in, in socioeconomic. So, so this is all those districts, every district. I didn't, I didn't eliminate any because it made us look better. I didn't eliminate any because it made us look worse. It's every district that fits that group. There's fifteen of them. And the reason why it's important is that then you can, when you create your league, you can make some comparisons. So one of the things that jumped out at me was our maintenance. Our maintenance budget per student is, is the bottom of that group, fifteen. Now, we, John and I discussed this for a bit today. This does not include what you spend on capital projects. So I, we don't know this, but we're, we're guessing with educated guess that if, if you were just doing how much we spent on capital projects, we'd be much higher than fifteen. Because we do spend a decent amount on capital projects. Five hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars, six hundred and something thousand plus the rod grants last year. So we do spend a lot of them. What we don't spend, though, is money on personnel to, to keep things up to date and preventative maintenance. We don't spend money, we don't spend enough money in the, in any of those areas of preventative maintenance. We don't, this would include like contracts with vendors to come out and, like we talked about at the time, changing all your filters, right? Making sure your HVAC seat is working efficiently, things like that. We don't spend enough money on that. And that's, that's represented right in here. So basically, what we're saying is if you build a new bathroom and you put in a new heating system, you have to have somebody maintain that stuff to keep it up to date, up to par.
Steve, just one quick question here on the transportation bus. Those are not included in the total cost?
Right, because some districts don't have transportation, which would be a big.
So those districts are at a, at an advantage. They don't have to run buses.
Exactly. And I also think, like, if you look at Rockaway Township, they spend double what we spend, but they have a lot more buildings. So the building costs, right, that would drive up how many, you know, if you have smaller schools, right? If you have six schools with four hundred kids instead of two schools with seven hundred kids, you're going to have more maintenance personnel and all that other, all the other pieces that go along with it. So I think that, we don't know if that's the case, but I'm thinking that's probably some explanation. Because it did jump out at me as, why, why would they double the amount of what we're spending?
Why don't the, the Bergen County townsfolk, like, you know, one square mile or less, maybe walk out your front door, your school's across the street? Yeah, so it really saves them a lot of money.
Sure. Yeah, like, you're right. There's a bunch of them out there that all have. I'm sure Mountainside doesn't have a big of a, a real big budget for that. Rockaway Township probably has a bigger budget for transportation than we do, considering the size. Any other questions about this, this chart? This, this thing, you're probably going to get sick of because I'm going to use this chart when we talk about anything, when we're comparing ourselves to anything. I'm going to use this when we talk about our scores. I'm going to use this group. This is our, this is the NFL to us. This is like, you know, the National League, the National Football Conference for us. And we have to gauge ourselves against this. It's a heavy hitter league, though. It's not, you know, this is a good league for us to be in, right? You know, there's a lot of other data. Wait till you see the other things. Another, another data piece I'm going to share with you. When you're trying to compare, when you add the academic side to it, you have to start comparing in the population and your education, right? So you, so you also, when you look at the difference between some of the towns' population, the education of the population, staggering the difference. Whereas we are somewhere in the forty-five percent of the people twenty-five and older have a four-year degree. Some of these, some of these towns are in the sixty-fives with that. So that's a, that's a tough, this is why, this is a tough group. This is not, this is not a low league for us. This is a good league. We should aspire to move up in these categories. All right, next thing is about banked cap. I was just going to give you a little bit of a history on banked cap for the people in the audience that don't really know what that means. A few years ago, when the, when the state put caps on your budget, they let you bank the cap for up to three years. And the reason being was if you didn't need two percent, you didn't need, you didn't have to take two percent. And what was happening was if they didn't allow you to bank it, everybody was just going to take two percent because they were going to lose the, the ability to raise that. So last year in Denville, you were experiencing, we were experiencing, considering I'm a resident, too, we experienced a blip in the downward valuation of our properties, right? We lost twenty-something million dollars in, in value. So because of that, our taxes were going to go up even without an increase in the budget because the, the money was getting spread around not as evenly as it was before. So that blip has evened off and actually taken a little, a little pump up, somewhere in a three million dollar range, John, two, two to three million dollars, of increased value of properties. So the reason why I'm bringing this up is that in, in last year, the board, the board decided to, to take a very small tax increase and, and really cut away certain things that they had, that they had to do to make it more powerful. Because I think, if I'm not mistaken, you were somewhere in a seventy-dollar range without doing anything. Was that pretty close? Something like seventy dollars without, without even an increase. It was going to be a seventy-dollar tax increase per family. So this year, so last year, the Board of Education decided to do that and actually let seventy-seven thousand dollars expire. So that seventy-seven thousand dollars can never be made up. We can't, we can't make up that seventy-seven thousand dollars in taxes. So this year, we have two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars expiring and next year we have five hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars expiring. So there's a little thing that happened that I have to explain it to you. And this, and this is not uncommon. This is what happens. When, when John takes this stuff, this data from Excel and starts to input it into the state system, it shoots out what's called a waiver. Because there's a two percent cap. There's also built-in waivers. I don't know if it's on the town side, too. There might be. But, yeah, it, so what the state said was, you have a two percent cap, right? But if you have, these two things happen to you, we're going to let you go above a two percent cap. The two things are a, a bigger increase in your medical than you were expecting. And the second one is if you have a growth in population. So, right, so we didn't get the growth in population one, but we did get the one for the increase in our benefits, right, John?
Yes.
So that two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars that's expiring cap, we're actually, with this budget I'm proposing, is actually going to let some of that expire. Because we're going to take the waiver. They don't let you take your banked cap until you use your waiver because it don't want you to grow your banked cap. So we're eligible for a waiver of somewhere around a hundred and fifty thousand?
The waiver is three hundred thousand.
Three hundred thousand. So we're eligible for a three hundred thousand dollar waiver. So we have to take that three hundred thousand dollars before we do anything with this banked cap. So some of our banked cap will expire. Now, what that means is you could actually raise taxes more than that if you wanted to. That's not the, the budget that I'm presenting here, though. I'm just letting you know that we will be expiring banked cap. It's just, we're taking it as a waiver instead. It's the same number. The taxpayer doesn't feel a difference. It's the same exact number. It's just a different name for it. Does that make sense? Question? I can see it.
I'm, I'm sure.
All right. It's, this, the same exact thing happened to me last year, too. It's exactly the same thing with the waivers. When you put it in the budget system, it just shoots out this waiver. You have to take the waiver. You can't use your banked cap. It makes sense, though, because the other way you would be building your banked cap more. The state is saying you have to use your bank, you have to use this waiver before you use your banked cap. So some of the banked cap will expire. So we have this two hundred and fifty-four thousand expiring this year and five hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars expiring next year. Remember, any banked cap that you let expire, forget about the waivers for a minute. You can't get back, okay? So you saw the original budget I presented here two weeks ago and it had, it had the, the additional staff members in it. Everybody remembers that. We had some lively discussions about it and that's rightfully so. So, so I listened to what you said and what I was trying, what I was, what I was trying to explain to everybody was that it's not that we can't do the observations. It's not that. It's that I want to do more or better of that. But I, I'm, I'm very comfortable with this plan right here, at least for the year, and reevaluate next year. So basically, if you see, I put it up here, I took out the two areas that we were talking about in terms of extending, expanding staff. So we took out the curriculum supervisor and we took out the B and G in-house. In other words, hiring a person who works directly for us. That's out of the budget. It's actually in there now. It's just a proposal, if everybody gets that. So, but then I have to add some stuff back in. So we add back in the edge services valves, which we will do better with. We're going to centralize that. It wasn't centralized this year. What I mean by centralized is in my office with Sandy, all this, the evaluation plan will be created in a central location, not by building. We will assign who does what. We will let the, we will also let the edge services person help us with our walkthroughs, too. Because a walkthrough is an evaluation instrument for teachers. And what it is, is about a five to ten-minute walk-through their classroom and see what's going on. We also do our regular evaluation, but this is just more, more observations, more observations of staff. So we're proposing to do one per month per student of these walkthroughs. So I would also have the edge services person handle some of that because it's basically a checklist. Did you see this? Did you see this? Did you see this? It's not, there's not a lot of subjectivity there. It's pretty concrete. You know, you walk in, did you see, was the, was the objective on the board? Yes, it was or it wasn't. So we add, so we take away a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we add back twenty-five thousand. Instead of hiring our own B and G person, we outsource it. I'm recommending this now. I'm recommending this for several reasons. And I think this is an important thing to do. I think it's a, it's a good thing to try and see how it goes. And this is an actual number because I got a quote already for this number, for forty-eight weeks of an entry-level B and G person. Not, not a master carpenter or master electrician. It's like a, it's an apprentice, a helper. And then I have to add back two, the supervisor was going to teach two classes. So I had to add back the two classes. And DEA Article eight point seven requires that teachers get one-sixth of their salary to teach an extra class. So I took the middle salary, I didn't take the top, I didn't take the bottom, I took the middle salary, divided it by six, multiplied it by two. That's what we get. Pretty close. So the, so the cuts are one fifty. The total add is going back in is eighty-five, leading to sixty-five thousand dollar net reduction. Okay? Now, we could do a lot of stuff with sixty-five thousand dollars. We could, we could do sixty-five thousand dollars more projects if we want. We can cut sixty-five thousand dollars out of the budget. We could reduce, what my recommendation is, is to reduce our, our withdrawal from capital reserve by sixty-five thousand and take our withdrawal from one fifteen to ninety by sixty thousand. This is something I'd like to do. I'm not, I, I think it's important. I think you guys think it's important. And it's not a super big amount of money. It's five thousand dollars to get the, to get our enrichment program off the ground. I, I think I could do it. So I, I know I can do it self-sufficient. I just think that for year one, this might be an option. But if we decide, if we decide not to put the five thousand dollars into that enrichment program, we could, we can just take this, add that right into the, the reduction of capital withdrawal. The reason why, one of the reasons why I think it would be good to have it in there is because we spend a lot of money on our extended school year for our special ed program. We spend, you know, tens of thousands of dollars. I don't even know off the top of my head. But to spend a, a, a small amount of money, like five thousand dollars for an enrichment for a regular ed kids, I think is a valuable, a valuable use of our money. Also, one of the things might be, and this is, these are all mites because we haven't worked out all the details. We may want to offer some kind of a prep course to that honors bio class. I, I would, I would think that we should not pay for that. That's my feeling. If it's a, if it's a course that we're buying into and we're saying you would benefit from taking this, this prep class for that, a week or whatever it is, maybe we use some of that money to fund this summer, this summer enrichment kind of program we want to do. Either way, we're going to have a summer enrichment program. Regardless of whether or not we, we fund it is a different story. My recommendation is, at least for the first year, if we can, if we can swing it, I would put five grand in there to help get the thing off the ground. And I think it'll be, it'll be easier to be self-sustaining after that. And I know, I know in the committees I said that we weren't going to put any money into it. And again, if, if that's the direction of the board is not to put it in there, we'll still have it. We just won't use any, any of our budget to fund it. And that's what I have.
Tom, you want to go ahead?
Yeah. If I could just add, Steve, about the semi waiver, one second?
Okay.
About two o'clock this afternoon, I received an email, which I did forward out to the board, that our application for our semi waiver was denied by the county. That means that we have to put in our budget fifteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars in the revenue side because of the mandate that we comply with this semi requirement, which is a labor-intensive way to raise money through, semi stands for Special Education Medicaid.
Medicare.
Initiative. So what we are proposing to keep this budget as it is, we will put the fifteen thousand, seven thirty-seven in on the revenue side and we will reduce our appropriation of extraordinary aid by that amount. That way, this will all stay the same and, you know, we can proceed from there. So to make it in a way that you can kind of look at it and the second line down on the revenue side where it says state aid extraordinary, right now, that is extraordinary aid of ninety-five thousand dollars. What we're going to do now is we're going to make that state aid extraordinary slash semi. So the extraordinary aid will be seventy-nine thousand, two sixty-three. And the, the semi would be fifteen thousand, seven thirty-seven, which will equal to ninety-five thousand. It's just bookkeeping stuff, again, putting it in the state format. So these numbers that you see here would stay the same. So that, in a nutshell, kind of sums that up. Hopefully, if there's any questions, I would be glad to, to take.
So I know we have, Steve, told you.
So, I know we have Steve's podium, which means that he's willing to take, or should be willing to take questions from the audience. So, if we could, if you have any questions, please do so. Just state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, maybe they should come up to the podium.
Yeah, that's the right thought.
I don't know, you were asking me to move over here.
So, just step up to the podium. Name and address for the record, please. Feel free to ask questions, make your comments, and then we'll ask the board for their comments and questions as well.
My name's Joe Smith. I live at Eleven Van Dorn Place in Bendel. Unfortunately, I wasn't here for the presentation that is represented by the, what's on the internet. Nice presentation. I have a question about contracted salaries.
Is that, is that the current one you're looking at?
I'm looking at what was on the, on the internet. On, on, on the...
Can I see the year on?
It says 2014, 2015.
2014, 2015?
Yeah, we should, okay. Yeah, we do have, we do have one.
I think it's budget 201 from last year.
We do have one budget presentation from 1516 on there. But this is, this is 1415, so it's this current.
This is the current year we're in right now, Mr. Smith.
So, the budget, the budget, there is one presentation on there for this, that we'll discuss.
It's very similar to what we just went through.
This is this year's budget, like this particular school year right now.
Oh, so is there one like this on there for this year?
This is, so, we do have one like that. And we'll have this one on there, too. We have a preliminary one, we'll have preliminary two, and then we'll have the final.
But that was probably from the final.
That's the preliminary 1415.
So, tonight, we're discussing the preliminary budget as recommended by the superintendent. Once the board approves the preliminary budget, it goes to the county, and then it would come back. And we'd still have to approve the final version of the budget. Which, I think, is the one that you have on your hand right now. But nevertheless, would, would go up on the internet and certainly be presented later on, I think, next month, April.
April.
April, yes.
Well, I guess I'm a little disappointed, because I came thinking that I had the latest information as to what the preliminary budget would be for coming here. Can you say I don't find this information?
It's the green sheet. The screen sheet is the paper for the next 1516.
Okay. Again, that would be great if we could have this on the, on the website, so that it could be reviewed before it's presented. Let me just ask a few questions, then.
Sure.
If I look at the, all of this information that you've presented, which is very important and very interesting, but it doesn't address the major part of the budget. The major part of the budget is salaries. Absolutely is salaries and benefits. And I see nothing that says what the salaries and benefits have increased by, what the total salary and benefit dollar value is. That I would like to see.
John?
So, some of that is on the green sheet, Mr. Smith, right? Instruction, regular programs.
Instruction, but that's everything. It doesn't break it down.
Oh, just the salary?
Yeah, yeah.
But the benefits is just benefits?
Yes. Benefits is there, it's just benefits. We will have that, yeah. We will have a more detailed, a more detailed presentation with all those facts and figures for the, for the April meeting, when we have to do the budget meeting. These are preliminary budget hearings, so it doesn't have all that detail that you're asking for. And, and also, some of the things that we're working on, we are, we are dealing with an expired contract, so we don't... If you're asking specifically about, like, raises work, things like that, that's not in there.
When will that contract be warmed up?
That's an interesting question that you're asking right now. We probably would defer on an answer on that until we have a better iteration. Unfortunately, as part of the process of negotiating, we're still in the middle of it.
It expired June 30th. So, we're, we're still working on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Name and address for the record, please.
Carlos, you can carry it back.
My Saguen, 61 Saguen Row. Do you want to comment on that question? The extracurricular, extra fees?
Yeah.
I would just feel that it'd be somewhat of a confusion, because you change from 150 to 75. But the way it is right now, I think it's one fee, and you can go to as many clubs or as many sports. If you do the sports, it's gonna be 115. If you do the club, it's gonna be 75. Somebody, and I assume that when it's 115, you can do club and sports.
Right.
So, you're giving two fees.
Right, right.
So, I might just leave it some confusion, because somebody joins a club, they pay 75, then later on, they want to do sports.
Oh, yeah, the, the...
No changing page.
The administrative assistants and the officer are not gonna be happy about this.
It's all confusing enough already.
They do, they give me a very detailed spreadsheet, though, so they're on top of who's doing what, and they keep track of it pretty well.
It may, I think, it may not be very necessary. If you can just count with one figure, that would cover both. I think that might be all right.
You know, you know why I didn't wanna do it that way? It was because we do have some kids who just do, like, math club. So, you just do math club, and you have to pay $150. You're paying the same amount that somebody playing baseball. Baseball has buses and coaches and uniforms and all that. Math club, you know, has pencils, you know?
Yeah.
That was why, yeah.
And it's kind of made sure that people do realize that they paid the 115.
Right, right. If you pay 115, you can do as many sports and as many clubs as you want. If you pay 75, you can do as many clubs, but you can't do sports. You gotta pay the extra.
Thank you. More questions from you? Looking right at you.
No, it's time now.
Okay. Any other questions from the, the audience? So, that being said, maybe we can go around the board table, if you don't mind. Maybe your comments, questions from the board, it'd be great. Carlos, I would start with you, so I'll start with Marianna this time first, if you don't mind.
I'm not sure where I'm questioning. If we're presenting this, not the curriculum supervisor and building around in-house person. I'm not for the $5,000 for the summer enrichment program. I'm not for other stuff that we still have in the budget. I like this version much better than the one last time. But I guess at this point in time, I won't support the budget as it is tonight.
Is there any other things you can talk about that?
Well, I, when, when we spoke in committee about, and I know you said you can do it for free, so I'm not for putting $5,000 in for summer enrichment. It should be self-funding. I don't believe it should be something that you need as an intro to our biology class, because if it's something that's part of our curriculum, we can make sure every student that's gonna be a part of it is in it. You can't guarantee that those kids aren't coming in camp or on vacation or anything else. So, I'm not for something that you need to be part of one of our classes, being funded by us, being offered in the summer, and we can't guarantee everyone will be.
Just to clarify, we were working on a hybrid or totally online program for that, so that the people have a little more flexibility. And it might not be a real long time, either. And, and this is all in the works, whether or not we even wanna do that, it's a different story. But it's just the, the option of doing it.
So, Marianna, there, you said there were some other things that you weren't supportive of. Is there any, if that $5,000 was out, I'm guessing that...
Well, I'm still not supportive, and no offense taken, of, we were told as a board it would be free to have our meetings up on video. I'm not supportive of spending money on that. I'm very upset right now that, in order to have them for free, Mr. Forte, when he answered my question, said that we've, and that I guess it's not flex their hours. We've swift changed their hours, you know, to be able to accommodate them coming in. I don't think it's the good use of technology people's time. So, I'm not for that. I mean, I went through a loan list of things last time, and these are still in the budget, so you don't need to go through them again.
Sure.
I'm not for spending $5,000 on a demographic study to figure out when we can come out of the trailers, when we could spend less and update with the same company that we've used before. So far, we're completely on target, I think, with what they projected for us. So, that seems, it's, it's small stuff. But I just don't think it's a good use of taxpayer funds.
Michael? So, my first time going through this budget cycle with the board, and it's, it's been a long process for the public that's out there. A lot of hours put into it by everybody up here. I appreciate everybody working together towards it. I think that we all have different ideas on things that we wanna see accomplished for one way, shape, or form. And I think that Mr. Forte and, and Mr. DiPaolo have done a really good job, as far as I'm concerned, on, on working with all of us to understand what we're looking for and getting it in the budget into a fashion that, that right now, I'm pretty happy with. I think that most of the things that were items that I either had issues with or had questions on, I've gotten my answers to, or we've made some changes to certain line items. I will also, I'll mention a couple of quick things. I appreciate work towards the extracurricular activities. I really think that that was something that was important to me, and I appreciate working that into the budget. One thing I will mention is the, the tax impact and the fact that, you know, this is kind of a unique year with the ratables going up in town, and the fact that, you know, we are able to basically get more bang for our buck, if you wanna put it that way, out of the, the tax impact for the residents in town. And I think that's really important. The one thing I've talked a lot about, and I appreciate some of the changes that, that Mr. Forte presented today with regards to adding items into the budget that are reoccurring costs, because we can only take the bank cap for so long. Once we use all of our bank cap in a couple of years, there's no more bank cap to take. And therefore, if you add in reoccurring costs, in a couple of years, you're not gonna be able to sustain that. Even, especially with the additional cost on benefits going up as quick as they are. So, I appreciate working towards some of the changes that were kind of presented tonight. And I think that's all the comments I have. I'm, I'm fairly happy with where we've gone with this budget and all the work that's gone into it, and where we are preliminary for now. Obviously, it's not final, but at least for the preliminary budget, I'm, I'm pretty happy with it.
Or, any comments, questions?
Yeah, I think for your benefit, Mr. Smith. I was luckily enough to be on, like, the finance chair this time, and so, and on negotiations. And we are trying to do some groundbreaking things in negotiations, and that's all we'll say about that. But time is money, and we don't know. It's actually not in our hands. It's going through the arbitration process. So, we don't have, it's not within our control to know what the final outcome. They do use a lot of county averaging and look at what we're asking for and what they're asking for. We don't know when it's gonna be resolved. So, we have to look at it for worst-case scenario-type thing. I, looking at everything that we've done, I don't think there's anything here that, with the exception of we did ask in committee for cost justification on a declining enrollment to just explain the headcount increase with the declining enrollment. Now, the maintenance guy, I don't know. I live right up the street, and with all this snow, the guy works seven days a week. There's a guy in-house ready. There, there is a lot of kudos that should go to the staff for just, you know, and I can see grass. Actually, they're, they're actually, maybe we're through the woods on that. But there were a lot of things happening. And when you look at the bill list from month to month, if you don't have the manpower, what do you do? You outsource. And we saw it on his earlier slide, that compared to other, like, towns, we spend maybe half. So, they do a great job. We're not, you know, it's, the question is, like, the trade-off, so... But as far as, like, other things, and I think, like, when it gets back to the VA, he could just summarize, our health benefits are, like, at 8%. The cost of living allowances, there's things that aren't keeping us to the 2%. And we did see it as an opportunity with the favorable rateables. Our debt is still declining. We have a pretty low debt service. We're down, what, $500,000 or less? So, there's, like, we're not going down that road. And so, as a result, it hits the taxpayer. Now, if there's a different funding mechanism, maybe we can levy taxes some other way. But today, in today's world, that's how it's funded, education and stuff. We did trade off, like, last year, we didn't do a lot of things that we wanted to do. But we were proud of a few things, like Hines Barton and STEM. So, we wanna keep the ball going forward, looking for things to put our, set our sights on, and, you know. I'm, I'm generally supportive of what we have in front of you.
Thank you, Paul. Carlos, I'll jump to you.
Thank you, Dave. I'm happy with some of the things we've been able to get into the budget. A lot of these cost effects, and they're out of our control. We have very little discretionary money left over to do things that we, that we can do. As you can see from a list of repairs and things we want done, it's extensive. It's not all-encompassing, but, you know, we're chipping away at it like we have been over the last few years since I've been here and continue to. So, thank you, Steve and John. For preliminary budget, I think we're at least all.
Thank you. Dina?
Yes. So, this is also my first budget cycle, and I was fortunate enough to be on the finance committee. So, I got to see a lot of the detail, and I got to see, I guess, how the sausage is made a little bit. So, that was interesting for me. I'm happy with several things that we've managed to accomplish. The reduction of the extracurricular fees, also important to me. I like what I've seen with the B&amp;G and the curriculum person, the changes there. You know, things that obviously are challenged and we need to continue on, and other people touched on this, is, you know, we have upwards of $20 million that were identified in the RRP, the projects that have to be done. To me, that's, you know, that's a huge overhang of debt that's sitting out there that we obviously have to address going forward. Also, you know, like Marianna picked up on, I'm not necessarily supportive of the summer enrichment $5,000. That's something I'd like to see maybe come out. Also, again, the demographic study, I feel the same way. I think we've done one already. I think, I think we could update what we have. So, but again, those are relatively small items. Generally, I'm, I'm happy with what we're up.
Thanks, Dina. Oh, what do you got for us?
I have Nicole Donalds, this is Mrs. Irving in the sixth grade. What, you wish you woke me up? Donald, how come you're not paying any time?
If it's when I use your middle name, you'll be in trouble.
Okay. All right. I, too, am on the finance committee. And I'm glad to see, we're making some progress here. We're having less disagreement now and more cohesiveness We're having less disagreement now and more cohesiveness as we push this process forward. I will comment on the healthcare costs that you talked about, and this is really a tough situation, not only for our district. I've been on the finance committee for many years now, not once has somebody said, oh, we're going to pay less money for healthcare costs this year. It's, it's been escalating at a frightening level, so it's a big issue. And if you had time to read either the Star Ledger today and the daily record over the week, I mean, this is a big problem with the state, the pension cost and the healthcare cost. It's going to take a long time to fix, but it's a serious problem. You try to craft a budget, and you have escalating healthcare costs. And the other thing I saw today too was with the pensions, the, one of the proposals was to have the pensions managed locally and, you know, paid for locally, so you'd be responsible for the pensions a year, particularly a district, which could be disastrous for a small district like this. So that's a real serious situation that's anywhere supposed to be resolved. I would like to see the B and G person be full-time rather than outsourced for the extra fifteen thousand dollars. I've been a member of the B and G committee for many years until this year, and we've had a lot of repairs to our buildings this year that probably would not have to have been done if we had preventive maintenance going on and a more proactive maintenance program. And Steve's done a great job along with John, I'm getting on top of that, we've, we're making progress there. And we also have a very small maintenance department, so if somebody is out of vacation or out sick or something like that, they're really stretched thin. And then you get a winter like we've had here, puts a lot of strain on the HVAC systems and everything, so you need people here to repair it. And it's much better if we can repair those things in-house rather than calling up an electrician or a plumber to come in, and he might not be able to get in here right away. A lot of this stuff is on an emergency basis, so I think that's money well spent to put somebody on full-time and, you know, give them a career path with the benefits. You outsource it, yeah, you get a good person, but if they get a better deal down the road, they're going to take a hike. So that's something I think should be reconsidered. The summer enrichment program, I think it's a good idea, certainly self-funding is the way to go. But I think if you do something like that, some type of survey would be needed to see if there's interest in that, because there's so much competition out there for the parents' dollars during the vacations, the spring break, the winter break, and then you get the summer vacations. And I know some people that run these camps, and not too many people show up, there's too much competition. So I think it's a great idea to offer something educationally for our students in the summer, but I'm just wondering who would come? And if, you know, you put a, even self-funded, you have a teacher here, you're paying somebody to do the work, there would be enough people interested in that. So I think it's a great idea, but I just think we've got to see if we have the volume of students that would take advantage of that. The space study, demographic study, I still think that could be done in-house. I know we have a decrease in student population, we've talked about the condition of some of the trailers, but I would not be in a hurry to demolish these trailers. I don't know what the cost is to launch one, but you could have a turnaround in the population. And I know the DEA is a little kindly on the trailers, but, you know, who's going to pay for an expansion in one of our schools? And we also, except for Lakeview, you have really limited space to expand at Riverview as well as here. So I just think we could do that at a house rather than spend the money on that. So that's about it, but again, I thank everybody for their hard work, and we are making good progress.
Don, thank you, appreciate that. Steve, before, before you go, do you want to comment? Do you want to add anything to what we heard?
I didn't want to, I didn't want to put a slide out about this, just, I didn't want to keep saying the same thing, but it is important to remind the public and the Board of Ed that this budget also includes a hundred thousand dollars in new revenue in the budget. Revenue that doesn't come from the taxpayers, comes from things that John and I have done to bring in tuition and to also bring in revenue through the rental of our facilities. So for example, we have a sixty thousand dollar rental agreement with the YMCA. We have a forty-five hundred dollar rental agreement with the New York Yankees. We have a three thousand dollar rental agreement with the New York Giants. So we also are looking for other ways. We also have found through some new ways of registering students tuition. So we will be bringing in well, way more extra, new revenue that's not from the taxes than ever was done before. So I think that's important for everybody to realize that. There's a couple of ways to get things in a budget. One is cut, two is raise taxes, three is to find the revenue some other way. So we have to do all of them, so it's not going to just work. Bringing in a hundred thousand dollars is not going to solve all our problems, but it does, it does help, and it's discretionary funds. I also like to remind the public and the board that we're in the middle of a two million plus dollar ESA project that will be budget neutral for the district, that will, will fund needed maintenance improvements to our HVAC, our lighting, possibly roofs and windows, maybe not roofs, but windows and doors. So these, these items will all be funded through this ESA program, which isn't free, the taxpayer's still paying, but, but it's budget neutral. So you do the two million dollars and you pay it off over fifteen years, but the company guarantees the savings in your, in your utility bill when you bring in this more efficient equipment. So for example, if the, if the company we go with, which we choose, which are large companies like Honeywell and Con Edison, we haven't chosen the company yet, but if we, say we choose Honeywell, for example, and Honeywell says you're going to save a hundred thousand dollars a year over the next fifteen years for fifteen million dollars, and the first year you're going to save eighty thousand dollars, they have to guarantee the twenty thousand that you didn't save. So that, so we're looking at that. As a matter of fact, we're more than looking at it, we're at the point where we will be looking to start getting some of these things approved by the board. Actually, we're about, we're probably between twelve and eighteen months out on actually putting a shovel in the ground. So it's a long process, but the process is started. There also are some staff reductions in this budget. I don't want to get into all the details of it, but there are staff reductions in this budget. We also are looking at ways to save on staffing by when possible, not all the time, but when possible, replacing someone, one person who has benefits with two people that don't have benefits. I mean, the salary cost will be equal, but the benefit cost will be far reduced. We can't do that all the time. When we can do it, we will do it, and, and I think that's a really important thing to try to help slow down the growth of the budget without cutting things out of the budget. That makes sense. Okay, that was my notes.
Those are good notes. So we, a couple of quick things, I mean, John, Steve, thank you both for, from administrative perspective, certainly the other administrators putting together their numbers into the budget. Finance committee, and really the rest of the board in terms of your due diligence, quite frankly, whether you agree or disagree, I can vouch probably for everyone, to the audience, that everyone goes through this budget with a fine-tooth comb and tries to, as best as possible, be mindful of the taxpayer's dollar. It may not always, we may not always agree, we sometimes will, but certainly the, our hearts and our minds are in the right place in trying to find the best use of the public's dollars. Generally speaking, I think I agree with most of the board in terms of where we're at as far as the budget goes. I think that, you know, we're taking advantage of a interesting system, there's time within the town to be able to identify additional tax revenues without impacting the public so much, or certainly not as much as we had done last year. For sixty-five dollars, it looks like the district is going to see an increase of something like five hundred thousand dollars or so in local taxes, right, John? Actually, more than that. Last year, we had an eighty-five dollar increase per the average household, and saw significantly less dollars towards the district. I think that's important to know, because ultimately, what we're trying to do is take advantage of how far each dollar goes. And this year, the average household, I think my numbers were right, from before, every dollar had been increased to the household last year was a nine hundred dollar amount to the, to the district. This year, that same dollar goes seventy-seven hundred dollars, seventy-five hundred dollars, I'm doing that here. So it's a, it's a pretty big increase from where we were last year. And I think that's important. There's obviously things that we're doing within the district from a capital perspective, trying to maintain the buildings and improve those buildings. Can't hit everything on the list, I think, Dino, you hit the nail on the head when you talked about something like twenty million dollars worth of long-range plans or long-range maintenance and capital improvements that need to be taken care of. I was speaking with John Perrin, a former board member, and talked about how that number never seems to change, that we always seem to be in the millions of dollars, no matter how much money we put towards improvement. And it's something that we need to be mindful of. I know Mike and I have spoken about, you know, trying to be cost-conscious, cost-efficient, and trying to knock down reoccurring costs, which I think is an important thing. A couple of things I think that I probably want to try to get discussed if we could to at least give John and Steve a sense of where we're at from a board perspective, are the few things that jumped out, I guess, that were more universal. I hear, Mariana, where you're coming from in terms of the meeting costs, the demographic costs certainly, it's going to be echoed over here by Don, and the enrichment cost, I think, was echoed by Dino, right? So if we could, maybe talk those through a little bit, just to give Steve an idea of where we stand on those areas, maybe the enrichment and the demographic study, and then kind of go from there. Carlos, I don't know if I heard your thoughts on those two particular areas, do you have an opinion or a thought?
I do, I mean, I, again, it's a preliminary budget, so I, you know, but in terms of the demographic study, I think we have principals in the schools that should know their buildings, should know the schedules, and should know how to make the best use of it. I mean, to me, that's part of their remit, and should be part of their job. We shouldn't have to pay somebody, in my opinion, to come in and tell us how to make the best use of our.
Actually, I think that's another thing that I don't like, which is the person coming in to tell us how to schedule our buildings. That's a different five thousand dollar line, you know?
I thought that was the same.
The whole thing, demographics and building, okay, sorry.
So not crazy about the demographic study?
Right. The enrichment program, you know, I'm neutral on, you know, it's in the budget, doesn't mean you have to use it when the time comes, but it's, but it's there in case, you know, something happens. I don't know if later on down the road, you put some money into it, you build it up, and it becomes a revenue generator, you know, as time goes on. So maybe it's a small investment upfront to bring in more money down the road.
And, you know, I heard you on the demographic study. Don, did I hear you on that part? On the demographic study, do you have an opinion?
As I mentioned before, I'd rather see something like that done in-house with the, with the principals. As I mentioned at the other meeting, I don't have the counts right in front of me, but we have a lot of classrooms with, at twenty kids per classroom, and I forgot the count, we have a good chunk of classrooms under, under twenty kids per classroom, sixteen per classroom. So, you know, I mean, I can get out the calculator, start crunching the numbers and everything, and I think we can do some consolidation with the existing space inside the schools without bringing in somebody for five thousand dollars. I think being more comfortable with the principals and the assistant principals working on that, it's their schools, their buildings, rather than having somebody from the outside telling us what to do.
You know, I was just thinking, like May, a little story. I had a interesting football story that where we had one of our, our kids messing around with water bottles or something like that on the sideline, and one of our other coaches, I said something to one of our kids, and one of the other coaches said, you know, don't worry about it, you know, like you said the kid's name, you know, Coach Napoli's talking about water bottles, that we're probably doing everything else right. And I was just thinking about that, because we have a thirty-plus million dollar budget, and we're talking about ten thousand dollars, which seems, I mean, it's ten thousand dollars, of course, but I feel like there's a lot of other things that are right here, so I'm actually, I'm just going off record, going off of a tangent, but it feels like a good, much better situation than we've been in the past. So, Mariana, we talked about, heard your thoughts on the demographic study. Michael, what are your thoughts on that?
You know, I know that, I asked a bunch of questions to Steve about this specifically to understand a little bit more about it. I've looked up the reference for the person who he suggested, twenty-plus years of doing this, is from New Jersey, and a lot of large districts have used him. I know that Steve believes strongly that it's something we need, and I don't know if our in-house personnel have the capability or the expertise to do it, and I trust if Steve is adamant about this, I think it's something that, that I would support.
Barb?
Yeah, initially, when this came up in committee, we were like, we've done two in the last seven years, demographics, you know, enrollment's declining, but his thing is about space utilization and the decisions that might be recommended could be unpopular, I think, to piggyback off of Mike, that this, it's difficult as an administrator to make tough decisions when it comes to space utilization. And if, if they're looking at how all the other schools do it, and we get some sort of rationale, game plan for getting out of the trailers and things, I think that's a positive for the, you know, bang for the buck. So, yeah, that's why it's in there, I guess we didn't, we did disagree in committee on it, and we're still, you know, I think it's healthy to do so. And our committee also said, if we need another week to vet, I mean, we'd give two weeks on a policy, this is like pretty, pretty important stuff, so if, since these are changes from the first cut, I still stand as a finance chair in saying that we felt it good as committee to wait and maybe vote next week to give everyone time to digest the changes or recommend these little fine-tuning.
Right, like I said, and I appreciate that, I just wanted to get some clarity to understand kind of where we're at. Again, it sounds like for, for the bulk of the board, not even a disagreement necessarily, but maybe the fine-tuning is revolving around five to ten thousand dollars. And so I'd like to get as much of it.
It might even be really just five thousand dollars, because I'm totally fine with pulling the five thousand out for the enrichment program. I think we can do it, I know we can do it self-funded. I just thought that maybe to get it off the ground, we would put that money in there, but I'm fine with doing it self-funded. Probably won't, I mean, let's be honest, we probably won't have as many options or something, but it's okay. Maybe, maybe we start our first year with just one class. I think that would be important to get it off the ground. But the demographic study, I have to disagree with the people that are against it, I have to explain why. This study is, first of all, we cannot keep the trailers. That's, 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 these things are twelve years old, we have to have a permanent solution. And each trailer, according to our architect, is about twenty, about three hundred thousand dollars, between the install, the, you know, running any wires and things like that, so about three hundred thousand dollars. This study will help make a determination on whether or not we can move away from the trailers and actually get rid of them. We can't keep pretending that a temporary solution is meant for a long term, we just can't do it. So eventually, the county is going to tell us to take the trailers out. As a matter of fact, the architect said he can't believe that you're still passing CUSAC with the trailers in. CUSAC is the way that the state monitors a district, and those trailers are meant for about seven years. Our architect also said, this is our architect of record, by the way, DeCarrad Ravino, said that, that you can't even get a permit to build one of these, these things anymore. So the state is just not allowing you to use these temporary facilities for, for the, for housing students, especially for the long term. So what this study will do is have a person who's an expert in this field, there's no expert in this field in our, in our, in our buildings, and anybody in the district has this kind of experience in combining the study of population growths and building, combined with your actual usage of your building and deciding whether or not you can eliminate the trailers. We have to face it that these trailers have, there has to be a solution for them. It's like the board office, right? The board office has been talked about and kicked down the road for a long time, and we're doing something about it. This is the next, this, this thing is just as important, if not more important, because our kids are actually in these than the board office. So, I mean, I'm going to be honest with you, I will not feel comfortable, no matter what, recommending demolishing the trailers just based upon what I say and what our administrators say. I will never be okay with that. And I just want everybody to understand, I just don't feel comfortable that, you know, that we can handle it without a third party actually saying, you know, I've done this for twenty years, and yes, you can eliminate those trailers, you won't experience a population growth, you know, the next however many years. So, I mean, obviously, I'm adamant about the room utilization and demo, not as adamant about the enrichment program. I mean, I think it would be good, but it's a nice-to-have. I don't think the demo studies are nice-to-have.
As I've said before, I just, I feel like we've been down this path just last year. We brought in the guru of scheduling, spent at least five thousand dollars on it, and they came back and told us exactly what we knew already. I don't want to waste another five thousand dollars to know what I know already.
But that's not the same kind of person. That was a schedule, a middle school scheduling person who had four canned schedules and saw whether or not our building and our programs would fit into one of these four canned schedules. It's not, it's like an apple and an orange, it's a totally different thing.
All right.
Couple of comments, I'm sorry. So Barbara, to your comment before, if it's a tough message, I'm sorry, the principals in the schools, they're the leaders here, they should be able to deliver tough messages, right? So I don't buy pushing off that responsibility to a third party that we happen to hire. The other thing is, couldn't this guy do the room study based on the current demographic data that we had, that's only a little more than a year old?
He might be able to update it or something.
Right, so does that reduce the cost? And what if at the end of the day, he goes back and says, hey, yeah, you know what, you guys are fully optimized, there's nothing else I can do. Do we get our money back? Like, is, is there anything that's going to guarantee that he's going to be able to do anything for us? And the last thing I'll mention is, I thought we had a plan to get students out of the trailers already that we discussed when I reported at the last Buildings and Ground meeting, so that's without this guy even coming in yet. Based on the demographic study, we were moving people out there, and we had the dates for each of the schools. So hasn't that changed?
No, so for example, we are moving away from using Riverview, just use a Riverview example, as classroom space for a regular classroom. We will continue to use it for office space, for meeting space, and possibly small group instruction space. Valley View will go from using two of the four classrooms as, right now, they're used as regular classroom space to two, the other two will be used as meeting space and storage and things like that. But you got to understand too, we're at the point where we need to put money into these, so I don't feel comfortable saying that these things can stay for any purpose if we don't start putting some money into it. So what I'd like to do is have someone else study and see if there's a way to be more efficient so that we can eliminate the use totally and actually demo them, or start putting money into them. Like, we have a, we have a thirty to forty thousand dollar awning job that we need to do here in Valley View that we put off. So, you know, I don't really want to spend thirty to forty thousand dollars on an awning for a temporary space that we may not need. So we're at the point where we need to either figure out that we need them or we don't need them. And it's, you know, the awning, if the awning falls down on a staff member, that's not, you know, we can't, we can't be okay with that either, so it's whether or not it's a teacher or a kid, you know, we're still going to be using them, we're just going to be using them for a different purpose. Like, probably in Riverview, we'll reclaim a small, we'll reclaim like an office site Like, probably in River View, we'll reclaim a small, we'll reclaim like an office site, make that a smaller instructional space and move, move an office outside. You know, that's just an example of River Views. And Lake Views, we're demoing one trailer regardless. It's in the budget, hopefully it knows the budget passed. That's just because that thing's shot. That has nothing to do with these other trailers. That's just, the floor is shot.
And then just one more thing I wanted, oh, sorry. No, please, Phil. You know, I think that another reason that I think I support it is, when I look at what the board should be looking at, I feel like we need to be looking strategically to the three- and five-year plan. And some of the times, I think we're thinking next year, which we have to also, I'm not saying we ignore that. But, you know, the LRFP and the work we're doing in the Buildings and Grounds Committee, I think is important to look at long-term. Something that Steve had talked about, like a roofing study to look at, you know, the roofing liability is huge. So looking at, hey, what can we do as far as projects to kind of get those, get through those? And do we have to go to referendum in the future, or can we avoid that? So I look at this piece as, and I've talked to Steve quite a bit about it, that it's a long-range plan and part of what we should be looking at. So that's, I guess it's just my little piece on another reason why I think it's important. And like I said, I think that if, if Steve tells me we don't have somebody in the district that can do it, I believe him, so.
So Steve had suggested $5,000 they had in the budget as a savings for the enrichment program, I guess coming out, and I guess essentially that could go to funding the demographic study. Does that make that any more palatable for those of you who are not, or not necessarily in favor? Donald?
No.
No, Dina?
No, I just, I've been here for a couple of demographic studies and, you know, it's a study. It's not absolute. And I was here when we tried to tee up the middle school, and the student enrollment was going off the chart. And now we're, we went from about, I don't know, was it 2,100 students? When I first joined the board, and now we're at a little under 1,700. So, you know, they're looking at the birth rates in Denville. We could get that information from the, from the county. Now, how many of those kids are going to go to school in Denville? They're going to go to St. Mary's, they're going to go to St. Elizabeth's. Are they going to move out of town? There's just a lot of unknowns when you do these demographic studies. I know these people are certified, it's very detailed, but it's not an absolute from what I've seen on the two prior studies. The, where we are now, you know, we've had a decreasing school population. So you got to figure out how many, again, the principals can figure out how many kids you can put in a classroom, and can you, you know, move the kids from the trailers into the, into the classrooms. And, you know, it's a topic for another time. The architects telling us they wouldn't approve trailers anymore. Well, where's the money going to come from if all of a sudden your student population spikes up? You had a couple of hundred kids. If you don't do a trailer, where's the money going to come from to put an addition on a school? You know, that's millions of dollars. Where is that money going to come from when you don't have it? So it's a tough situation in the state when they come up with that, that you can't put up trailers anymore.
Dina, do you have a comment there?
Yeah, just, I mean, taking the $5,000, I mean, makes it a little more palatable to me. But, you know, again, I still have an issue with, you know, the demographic study in general. You know, look, this guy collects his fee, he goes home, he's an expert. I have respect for experts, and this is, this is his job. But at the same time, two, three, four years from now, nobody can tell us what's going to really happen in Denville in terms of the population. None of us here. And if, you know, the population grows or changes in a big way, it's not like we can go back to him and say, "Oh, you were wrong." So, I mean, I feel like we, as a group, as a district, can come up with a pretty good idea of where we're headed, at least as good as somebody who comes in and spends a day or a couple of days looking at the numbers and coming up with their analysis.
Right, and it's also a space utilization, don't forget. So now we've been focusing on that.
Well, you know, one of the things, when Steve took Mike and I out for our first tour of the schools, I asked all the principals, said, "What about the trailers? What do you think about that?" And they all had fairly definite ideas about when we could be out of the trailers based on what they're seeing in the schools right now. That was an off-the-cuff assessment. But everybody has an idea about it. You know, I mean, they're the ones that are in the schools day to day. They see, they see the numbers. They have, you know, a pulse for that. So, you know, again, I come back to, I'm a little more flexible about it based on the $5,000, but I'm still not crazy about it.
Carlos, any thoughts, any differences, changes?
Not, Dina, Dina will have. It can't predict the future, right? It's just like in the financial industry, right? Past performance does not indicate future. Right, Mr. Smith, if they decide that he's not paying taxes in Denville, he sells his house and a family of five moves in, right? Because we've become such a great district that everybody wants to be part of it.
And a great neighborhood, right?
Well, I don't know about that, depends on who your neighbors are.
No, I think you're, I think you guys are both right in terms of the demographic part of it. Obviously.
To me, I feel bad that if we make permanent decisions that could have long-term, you know, budget impacts now based on a study that could be off come next year, right?
Well, I mean, the alternative to that, though, would be essentially just leaving them there until possibly giving them at some point where they just fall down, I guess, right?
No, it's not really an alternative, right? Like Steve said, we can't, you know.
So, I mean, the choice.
So again, I'm a little indifferent about them. Right, you know, I'd rather the guy reduce his fee and give us a space study if we really don't think that, you know, we don't have the personnel to do that. I challenge the fact that I think they should be able to do that because if you run a building, that's part of your agreement, in my opinion. Right, so if you don't have the right skills, then maybe we need to look at our personnel.
Well, I don't know that we hired anybody. Is it demographer or?
I'd say demographer. But you manage a building, you manage resources, all, everything is your resource. The computers in it, the people in it, the space in it, it's all yours, right? You need to figure out ways to manage it, right? And to me, it's a fairly simple thing. You have X number of classrooms, you have X number of classes, right? And there's free periods all over the place. Maybe you shuffle people around. I mean, I'm certainly not an expert in this field, but, you know, you can apply other principles to the same type of thing.
Sure, sure. Mariana, any thoughts or changes?
You don't really want to hear them.
I don't want to, I sure do, yeah.
I would agree. I'm happy that we made some of the big changes. I went off very long time last time about my thoughts. You're right, to come down to small amounts is a good thing. I was very upset with how much money we were spending on, you know, improving the buildings as Mr. Capella spoke about, you know, how much we have in the long-range facility plan that we're going to have to deal with. And yes, it never seems to change the whole time I've been on the board. It's just, you know, a lot of money that needs sinking to our. I could be upset about how very little we're spending on the actual education, but as our audience member brought up, so much of our budget is completely fixed and outside of our control, and there's only so much that's palatable. So yes, you're right, you're discussing a small amount of money, but in the whatever million-dollar budget we have right now, how much of it is discretionary? So I would like to suggest that we get our budget, you know, old format where we actually discuss those things, so it's out there for people to pull off the website and look at. I mean, it's true, there's not much that's within, and right now this year, I don't know what the discretionary amount is because I wasn't refreshed this year, but it's small. So you're right, there's not much to discuss.
No, it's usually small, and I think this year included. Michael, I heard you, Barb, any other thoughts? I know you were sort of okay with the space and demographic guy, right? So I guess that sort of goes to a different direction. I know Barb, the committee had recommended tabling this for another week and then coming back on the 16th in a special meeting and moving forward, or at least continuing to discuss it preliminary, but I'm wondering, from the board's perspective, what the thought is in terms of moving forward now with probably these small changes on them, or delaying it to the 16th? So, Mariana, do you want to?
No, I don't.
Do you want to?
I don't want to comment, Phil. I don't, I'm in bed all night. Michael, I'll vote tonight, I'll vote next week.
Okay, I vote.
I'm going to vote the same.
Barbara, I think I know what you think, though. What are your thoughts?
Yeah, we should wait two weeks for a policy. It was my hope that what we submit to the county, barring any county recommendations, is close to final. So if we need another week, I or we sit down, that's what I would write.
Carlos, what are your thoughts?
I'm okay with, I'm okay with that.
You are, Dina?
I tend to feel like Barb does. I'd like to maybe let it marinate for another week. You know, this is a big enough issue that it feels like another week would be helpful.
And Donald?
I agree.
It'd be nice to see the paper that actually reflects what we're voting on, which we don't tonight, because this is not, you know, this still has the two positions in it.
So.
Yeah, I'd put it on, you know, spend another week.
But I don't want to visit the people.
So then, boys, if we could, the 16th, we will have a, ask for, the board's okay with it, a special meeting to discuss the preliminary budget, and only the preliminary budget, if we can. I guess we'll continue with the 7:30 start date just to not throw anybody off. And if we could get one last flyer out, maybe to everybody, and if we can get it on the website as well. Steve? Sure. If you don't mind. So we could advertise that, guys?
Sure.
So the 16th, 7:30, same place, same channel, same time. And we'll move forward. It sounds like, unless someone disagrees, the enrichment fee of $5,000 can come out, but it sounds like there might be some support for this space utilization guy. I don't know if anyone disagrees or not. Steve, I guess you can take that for what it's worth, and if they ultimately disagree, I should say, whether it should be there or not there. I know your recommendation ultimately, the preliminary budget's your recommendation to the board, so hopefully we can get that taken care of.
Good.
Yep.
And what do you have, the 65, so the $65,000 that we're pulling out of the budget, what, are you all good with my recommendation of reducing our capital reserve? Capital reserve, which all?
Yep, question board? Yes, 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 yes. Graham? Yep, shake it ahead, yes.
It's just, you know, Dave, I may have a problem with being here on Monday. I have a business trip next week.
Oh, I will not be here Monday either. That's no good. So.
But again, this is just preliminary, right? I mean, this isn't the final.
This is not the final, though.
Right, I mean, we could vote tonight, see what happens, roll the dice, and, you know, then if we still need it, you do it next week, you know.
So you, you want to make a motion to do that? Maybe you can craft something, John?
It's on the agenda.
Sure. Oh, it's on the agenda again?
If there's two people, seven, I won't be here too. Yeah.
Yeah, well, it sounds like Mike and Carlos apparently have lives outside of the board, and so they make jobs outside the board.
Not much.
Lives, they have jobs outside the board.
What that actually pays.
So, you know, Barb just reminded me that it is on the agenda. We may have to make some adjustments, but when we get there to finance, maybe we can see where that goes, take into account that Carlos and Michael may not be here or will not be here, and then go from there. So in terms of the budget, let's, let's move forward to the rest of the agenda. And at our March 23rd meeting, we will be recognizing the River View and Lake View students for the Science Olympiad. Usually there is some sort of demonstration. I think last year was the car and motor van. This year, I hear is a watermelon and a giant mallet, so front row. What's that, this splash, yeah, be careful of that. That's always a good one.
Well, we are going. We are going to move that meeting into the cafeteria due to the 30, there's about 35 students coming, and some of them could bring three, four people with them. So we figured, let's move it into the cafeteria so we don't, we're all crowded.
Excellent.
The cafeteria here?
Yes.
Okay.
And from now on, we will have a sign out front that says where the meeting is. Library, cafeteria, something like that.
Cafeteria, library. So that's good, that's good cleanup, too. And then we'll also be, we got a certificate of appreciation for donation from, it's for a tree, right?
For an eastern red bud.
Which I wish I knew, that's going to be planted at River View. I know it's coming from Mark London, and it's being installed by Cashman, right?
Cashman, yeah, Mr. Cashman, as usual, doing a nice job.
Coming from the Green Sustainability Committee.
Oh, is that where, okay.
Mark London is the chair.
Ah, there you go, the Green Sustainability Committee.
It's a, it's a value of $150 plus the install by our landscaper, who's agreed to install that free of charge. And we also have, it's not on there, but I will make sure it gets on there for next time because it was up in the air. We will have the Foundation of Denville here on the 23rd when we accept their donation of approximately 15, 16, $18,000, something like that.
It's a, well, since we just mentioned the Foundation of Denville, there is the casino night coming up, which I think is soon.
21st, 23rd.
That's Saturday.
So that's the 21st, and we'll be able to thank them for their festivities and apparently the donation that they make so generously every year. So let's segue to superintendent's comments.
If the tech committee's okay with it, we, we feel comfortable that we've got over the par comp, knock on wood, and we're okay with not continuing the committee unless you still want to have another month. Cindy and I have discussed it and feel pretty confident that the, most of the items would go towards B and G. Some of them might go into the curriculum instruction committee. But if this committee's okay with it, then we would, we'd be okay with disbanding it. This is, this is pretty much what we said, get through to spring. We're a little early in spring. So if we want to do one more, but we just feel like we've got over the par comp, that was pretty much the idea of doing it. So, you know, knock on wood, because as my note said, anything can happen tomorrow, right? I know Carlos said it could not even happen, like in Union where the whole system crashed, right?
No, they hacked, it sounds like.
Right, hacked. But if everybody's okay with that, we feel confident that we can move on and just put those kinds of issues into curriculum, I mean, into our B and G department. What do you guys think?
I think it should, you know, like you said, when we were talking about the committees at the beginning of the year, right? Some of its infrastructure belongs in Buildings and Grounds, and some technology supports the curriculum, and it should be discussed there. And like my email to you when we were going back and forth about some of this, you know, I know we have a lot of infrastructure projects coming up. I can't wait till we get back, and if pendulum swings the other way, we can talk about how we can enrich a curriculum with technology.
Right.
You know, and as I said to Cindy at the beginning of the meeting, I walked over to her, and I thanked her for her patience with me, because I know I can be, you know, a little crazy when it comes to the technology stuff.
Did you say can be? Can we for the weird one that Dave, you said can be?
I am, I'm passionate about it, it's my job, it's what I do for a living, you know, so I enjoy it. But yeah, you know, from the reports I've gotten from my son and his friends, things could not have gone better.
Excellent.
That's good, especially from you.
All people, that's.
I'm not to be sure it was on record.
That's a good, that's a good comment. Did she get it on tape?
Yes.
That's good. You know, you're the chair of tech.
That's fine with me, and if I don't have to take minutes, I'm on board. No, that's fine, I understand that was the plan, so.
Any, I know Mike just stepped away. Is there any other thoughts from the other two, or?
Yeah, no, that's fine.
So some of the cricket, some of the tech software would fall, I guess all the software would fall into the crick. You were ready for that burden there, buddy?
Sure, it started out there, so it's fine, it's going back there.
So it's just, I think we were totally ad hoc at this point. So what does that make sure that we can disband without any repercussions or any other notions or policies, right?
We don't, yeah, not anymore.
I don't think, what's that?
I don't think it's ad hoc.
I think we have to change our bylaws for that.
We can, we can still have a.
You can have the committee and meet as needed.
Right. I think that's what we have.
And try that for the rest of the year and then decide.
And then go from there. And we'll let the future.
Because it isn't our policy, so I think that's probably the best thing.
All right.
I always think it's a good idea to sort of trial-run these changes in bylaws for a while to see if they work before you put them down on paper.
A good point, as usual. What else have you got, Steve?
So this goes into the other part. We felt that part week one was, was great, and our tech team led by Cindy Castanza did an amazing job. There were some minor problems, and I didn't see, and I was around a lot, and so was our assistant superintendent, our principals, and listening to Cindy and listening to our team. I don't think there was a single problem that lasted more than five minutes, that wasn't corrected in five minutes, and most of them were corrected in under 60 seconds. So these were all minor use, mostly user error, meaning somebody signed off when they shouldn't have signed off, something like that. Or we even had one, the worst thing that happened, I'll tell you, the worst thing that happened was, we plugged the, the cow, the computer, what do we call it?
On wheels.
Computer on wheels cart we have with 30 laptops into an outlet, and the breaker broke on, breaker switch flipped off and the laptops didn't charge, so we had enough spares and we covered it, and now we're going to spread the power out a little bit. So that was the worst thing that happened. So that's, obviously, that's a good thing considering so many things that could have happened. But I sent you a report from Cindy with all the technical stuff, I don't know, like all that stuff that you saw, I'm sure, no, I guess that was good stuff, right? That was what she said.
Carlos was in there, I saw Carlos, I liked the email when that one came through.
Yeah, so it was good. So I just wanted to thank that, the whole tech team publicly, and what a great job they did.
Thank you. Little caveat that there's three more weeks?
Yeah.
And we, we did get help from Mother Nature with the snowstorm, that, that helped us because the, the whole tech team was here until something like 10 o'clock on Sunday, the night before. So we were working on last minute things and getting the place up to par. I also wanted to mention that all five of our snow days have been used, so the next snow day would come from spring break, which would start with March 30th. I will put an, I will put something in the Friday folder this week and something out to the staff to remind them that this is what's going on. A little clarification on what happens when there's a state of emergency. So in the last case, the governor put out a state, state of emergency. Obviously, it was the right call because our, our meteorological survey, and talk about inexact science, said that we should have no problem getting the kids home on the day they became canceled school. But that day just kept getting worse and worse, and coupled with the fact that we're running low on salt, not just a Denble thing, but a New Jersey thing, because there's been so many snowstorms, those kinds of things lead into the decisions. Clarification, though, a state of emergency does not mean we have to close school. If there's a state of emergency coupled with a travel ban, it means you have to close school. So I just want everybody to know, like, there could be a chance when we have a delay, like this was a state of emergency, and about half the county just failed because of the state of emergency. The other half of us said, let's see what happens with the delay, because if you remember, there was a state of emergency, I believe, on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, and everybody closed. So, but if we had a delay, we probably could have opened that day, and the state of emergency was lifted somewhere around 4:00 AM. So that's why we went with it this time, with the delay, and then with the, with the understanding that if, you know, 4:00 AM, the state of emergency hasn't been lifted and it doesn't look like it's going to clear up, we would close for the day. But I just hate to use up a day when, you know, you could get into buildings at 9:00. So that, that's the thought process behind it. I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that.
Can you do another point of clarity for all those watching out there? A state of emergency doesn't mean that the snow day doesn't count either.
No.
It counts as a regular snow day against our total, because that came up quite often last year. People ask, oh, that doesn't really count.
We didn't have a choice, we had to cancel it.
Right.
That doesn't work.
And you're right, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving would be a day when we close early, so that's really hard to do a delay because then you'd have to, it doesn't count as a day unless you send the kids home at regular time.
So you're coupled with a lot of things.
Yeah, there's a lot of things that go, that's a, that's a harder call to me.
Yeah. Steve, was your message to us, did I hear it correctly?
Again.
Mr. Forte again.
Yeah, it was. That was my solo way of saying, I'm getting tired of this too, without saying it, but it was, it was rough. I even asked my daughter to do the announcement, she got on the phone and she goes, oh, like that, and I said, I'll do it. But, you know, it's getting, it's, it was getting hairy with all, I mean, how many delays and snow days did we have? People were getting sick of hearing me, I know that. In the beginning, like, oh, it's so great to hear your voice. I don't, I didn't get any of those calls after that. So again, our next meeting on the 23rd will be in the cafeteria, too, that was the last of my notes there.
So Mother Nature's, I know there's no more snow days allowed, right? And I'm sure the kids liked hearing your voice, I know my son said, Mr. Forte is calling again, yes! So that's, yeah, anyway. John, what do you got for us?
I just wanted to go over ESIP a little bit. It's been talked about both Buildings and Grounds Committee and Finance. Our ESIP proposals are due tomorrow, looking forward to receiving them. We had talked about in committee, and I received more information as of Friday, so I wanted to go over this with the board so we can get it on for approval on March 23rd as far as professionals to help us out with the process. The district has utilized two professionals in the past, and we'd like to use them for this ESIP program. One is Phoenix Advisors as a financial advisor, and the other is the firm of Willens Goldman as bond counsel. We will need to appoint them on the 23rd, and this way they'll be able to assist us with the review of the responses for the RFP. The fees that they will charge will be able to be built into the financing, so there won't be any out of pocket costs to the board. Phoenix Advisors' fee will be $8,000, and Willens Goldman's fee is $20,000. I will forward you the information I received from the firms this week, and again, we'll have that on for your approval on the 23rd. The only other professional we'll have to appoint will be further down the road, and that is by the process, we need to do an independent evaluator who will evaluate all our grading, if you will, and scoring of the responses, and that will have to be paid. That cannot be financed. That is the only update I have. Thank you.
Thank you. So it is now 9:25 according to Verizon. We will open for public comment. Please step to the podium, state your name and address, and any, ask any question you like.
I just have a quick test question, do I have to go up there?
Mr. Smith, you can have a seat and no problems.
Is the special meeting on 3/16 open to public?
Of course it is.
Thank you.
That's it?
That's it.
If we decide to do it, it sounds like.
Well, it may or may not, we'll, we'll keep you posted hopefully within the next...
If we have it, it is open to the public, and if we don't have it, no publicity needs to show.
They're online, so I can see?
You're going to know before we leave.
Yes, yes.
You're going to know in a moment when we decide whether or not to.
Should we move that voting portion up for Mr. Smith, this way he doesn't have to stand in and ask him?
I have a feeling he's going to be staying through the whole meeting unless...
It's, it's next.
It's pretty, it's pretty close, yeah. Any other questions from the public? All right. All right, that being said, public portion is closed at 9:26. Mike, do you mind taking us through the first portion?
Sure. So at our next meeting on the 23rd, under Old Business, we have several reports we will look to approve, including the Treasury of School Monies, Board Secretary, several education reports, enrollment, medical office, HIM reports, and then finally the, the meetings for the regular and executive sessions from the February 23rd, sorry, 9th and 23rd board meetings.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Cass, I'm going to ask Mr. Forte to give us some clarity, but if you don't mind, the next portion, please.
Yeah, we have action to be taken on personnel, resolution number one for extra duty leave replacements and observations. So I will move that.
Not to a third?
Just a few, Mike.
To three.
I'm wishing it paid. Okay. One, two, three, yeah, but they're all, you know, extra duty leave replacement.
Oh, sorry.
One of them is, well, Steve, you want to go through that first?
No, you need a second before.
Oh, second, I'm sorry, you are absolutely right. Second, Michael, second for Mike? Steve, you want to talk to us about that?
Sure. Any questions on the top piece? That's pretty much self explanatory, I think.
There were, you know, I didn't get a quick question, I'm sorry. I mean, typically, we wouldn't vote for this sort of thing until like, like May 3rd, right? Is there any particular reason?
Just due to the fact that it's coming up, and rather than approving it after the fact, which we really don't like to do.
The vice principal position.
Right.
In charge of vice principal.
Exactly. I mean, just because the, the, so our, our principal of Lakeview has been out on leave and has, has sick, and will not be back as quickly as she originally thought, it will extend. And what happened, what's going on is it's going to take a little time, the person needs to be fingerprinted, and, and then the background check has to be done, so by the time we get this thing moving, you know, we could lose another month. So I, I would prefer to get it going today so that the person can get his fingerprints done. We do have, that is a large school with close to 700 students and 100 people. There are also down a counselor there who can help pick up the slack, so they're down two, two administrative type people in the building, and they're having difficulty getting some of the, some of the things done that we need to get done. And this person has, comes with us, and I gave you your, the resume, he comes with a lot of experience and can handle what, what, what we, the plan would be was allow him to, to handle the day to day operations of the, of the building, the management of the building, when things come up, and allow the vice principal to handle the, the observations that he has to do and, and the IRMS committee and things like that. That's, so that's the plan, and...
And that's on an as needed basis, right? That isn't necessarily...
Totally as needed, right. That's what we even wrote, as needed on the bottom. So, so I, I also feel strongly about this because I think that this will, this is going to help our, our principal, too, because right now, I, she's, she's got a lot going on, and I think that having this person there will, will help her as well, you know, help her with her recovery.
Sure.
So I think it's, I think it's an important, important piece for everything. We, we didn't do it in this building, and it was against my better judgment not to do it. If I, if I had to do it over again, I would have pushed for this now, an interim in the middle, just because we're, it's, it's hard to keep up with what's going on day to day. And this one, this one I feel very strongly about. We're going to have to do something over there, and this is the solution I'm recommending.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board members?
Just as a point of clarity, the as needed is if we don't need to go to June, it's not, will the person be in the building five days a week?
No, I mean, it's going to depend on, on the principal's return, once the principal returns.
That, I understand that, but until the principal returns, it's five days a week he'll be in the building, not like...
It's not like you're going to pick Tuesday, Thursday.
Monday, Wednesday, Friday, they're coming in, and Tuesday, Thursday, we don't schedule any IRMS to leave.
I think it's for most days, I mean...
I'm numb, I'm fine with it if it's for most days and the as needed, I'm just trying to understand in my own mind.
I think it's both ways.
Okay.
When I, when I say most days, I know, I know he has, you know, he's, he's a retired person, he has a couple of things booked already, you know, doctor's appointments, a vacation here and there, but as a rule...
Oh, from our side, if he can be here five days a week until he returns, we're going to have him.
Yes. And then, and then there's also, I spoke to Ms. Basely today, you know, if she, if she's doing better and she can come back for partial days, she might do that, which, and we'll bring the other person in for a partial day, something like that. And I, I had a long talk with her about it today, and I really, I think we made some progress with her and, and just understanding that we want to do everything we can to help her feel better.
Good.
I know, I know, she's really taking it hard that she can't be there because she's a very invested person.
She's very invested.
I think any of us who know her, we 100% agree with that.
Yes.
Any other questions for the board before we move forward? All right, John.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Duarte?
Yes.
Mr. Deluna?
Yes.
Mr. Napoli?
Yes.
All right, finance, so, here we go. Barb, if you don't mind, talking to us about finance.
Well, what was presented this evening is slightly different than what we had presented last time, and so it was recommended that we hold off till next week, but given the circumstances that two people aren't here, do you want to take like a straw poll whether to proceed with the vote or table it?
I don't know, you can take a straw poll.
How about I, all right, I'll make a motion to table this motion until next Monday. There's no vote on the motion, is there?
What's that?
I said, I don't think there's a vote on the motion.
She wants to make a motion to table it, and somebody's seconded that.
And then we can decide whether to table it or not.
But you're saying there's not a...
I don't think there's a vote on it.
Oh, we don't have to table it, so, yeah, so you're saying...
See, once she says to table it, it's tabled.
There's nothing to table, is what we're saying.
Because it's her, mom.
Yeah, we haven't had anything to table yet, so...
No, I'm saying, if she says she's moving to table this motion, I don't know that we, do we vote on it? Am I asking?
So, no, nobody's moved anything, and just because she's the chair of finance doesn't mean she's the one that can move something.
No, that's right, then somebody can move it around her, and then you have to vote on the motion to move it and all of that.
Okay.
I just don't think there's a vote on the table.
But according to the agenda, new business actually be taken on A, personnel, B, finance, tonight.
Right, so it's not atypical, though, to make a motion or vote on a motion that's outside of the agenda. This happens to be on the agenda, it is something that can be moved.
So, we can't really...
So if you move it, that seconded and dies on the line, then you have a meeting next week.
Yes.
Right, okay. So, but, if you're going to make a motion, I'd ask that you make it somewhat specific to some of the changes that may have been discussed tonight, to your...
Well, that was going to be my hypothet, I guess not hypothetical, I know we can't discuss a motion...
Before it's...
Before it's been put on the floor, but if we were to need to move the budget tonight and somebody goes through the whole process of how to do that, what needs to change in here?
One item. We, we need to prove the capital reserve withdrawal of $85,000 instead of $150,000, which would be in the, let's see, after the numbers, it would be the third, be a further resolve. Be a further resolve to approve a capital reserve withdrawal of, strike the 150 and make it 85,000. And then we would make the $65,000 reduction, reduce the revenue by the 65,000, and all the numbers at the top can stay, and all the other numbers that are in the motion can stay.
So it's a little more simple than I thought.
Can I make a motion then to move finance, item number one, as John just stated, with the changes John just stated?
John, you're okay with that?
Yes.
I'll say it.
Okay, you guys are saying for it, actually.
Mr. Duarte is moving, and Barbara, second, please?
Yes.
So let's go to discussion, move, second, do it. Questions from the board, comments, thoughts?
So, we're voting on this this evening, I would request that the, the sheet that goes on the website is not the one we have here tonight, but the one that we're actually voting on.
Sure, an updated one, yes.
Yeah, I mean, one that doesn't have the curriculum supervisor and...
Yes, sure. They'll all be updated, yeah.
The updated, I mean, I understand it's the 3rd version, and that's really going to be the purple version, we already did the pink, so, you know, whatever color it is, but that should be the one that is the current preliminary budget sent to the county that the community can access online.
And the, the big changes, of course, are the curriculum supervisor coming out, the B and G person as a staff member coming out, but going back in as a contracted one.
Correct.
Right?
Right.
Those are the, I guess, the two major changes in there, uh, but it sounds like, again, John, to your point, the dollars, uh, increases, the estimated impacts and things like that would all stay essentially to what we're seeing on the green sheet.
Yes.
So, eighty-five means the full sixty-five thousand is getting off of capital reserve, but the rest of the budget is as is. Which means the demographics and all of that is still.
Well, I guess that's the, that's a change, right, so the curriculum supervisor we've discussed coming out, again, the, um, B and G person coming out, uh, the staff, it would be staffed by a contractor, I guess the only thing in, in sort of question in general, I know we talked about the couple thousand or the few thousand for the board meeting videotaping, but I think the bigger question was more so the five thousand dollars for the space and demographer, I guess that's the only thing that's open.
Well, and that's what's still in this budget that you voted on.
Right, so that's still in this budget.
On the five K summer.
It's, it's still in the preliminary budget.
The five thousand dollars for the space utilization-
So, the five K summer I just fired by is out.
Is out, that's not, that's right, the, it would, so the only thing in, I guess, that would be in there that's been a question mark too, is the five thousand dollars to the space and demographer person.
And the technology.
And the technology, right, excuse me, so, I forgot, what was it, cost of the technology?
Twenty-two hundred.
Twenty-two, so, I guess a dispute, if I were to use that word, is something like seventy-seven hundred dollars.
Seventy-two hundred.
Seventy-two, excuse me, seventy-two. So, you've moved it as is, which includes those things, uh, it's been seconded as is, any other questions, comments? No, no, alright, John.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
As I said, I'd like to see us kind enough, known.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Duarte?
Yes.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mr. Napoli?
Yes.
Alright, so, Mr. Smith, we're, not just for your benefit, but for the benefit of the public as well, uh, we're gonna get an updated sheet that will be put online, right, um, that will talk about the preliminary budget as moved this evening and voted on this evening, um, which will include, um, as much details as we can put out now, um, and some of the specific changes and some of the specifics that were added to the budget for the noted, uh, changes to the budget as well, um, we'll try to get that up lined by-
Tomorrow or the next day, but I will email you personally if you wanna give me your email address, I'll send it to you.
There's no need to meet.
And then-
Sure.
Yes, and to clarify, there was no meeting, no meeting next Monday.
Before you leave, okay.
No meeting next Monday.
Anybody in the audience that would like an email, I mean, email it directly to you, if you want, I'll take your email address at the end of the day.
There's also a sheet at the podium, you can write your email address on there, and we'll get that to you. And, a point of clarity, thank you, Mariana and others, uh, we will not be having a meeting now on March sixteenth, it does not need to be advertised, it will not be at the library, it will not be at seven thirty, right? Good.
Excellent.
Donald, do you wanna move through what might happen next meeting, on the twenty-third, not on the twenty, not on the sixteen?
For personnel, we will be moving people, receive extra pay, we have some student teachers there, according to this agenda, we don't have any new hires, uh, to, uh, to consider, of course, that could change, right?
Always.
Yep, we never know, the only question I had, uh, was that I, you know, if it's ever happened before, I never picked up on, is that, uh, on number, uh, one C, we have a mentor and a mentee where, uh, appears where Robin Peter is paid-
Yeah, just when you say that, a question.
Yeah, so, uh, that's interesting there that the, uh, the mentor is gonna receive from the mentee twenty-five dollars, not a lot of money, but it's, I just never saw that before.
Is that standard?
That's the state, the state requires, so, this mentoring thing happened years ago, the state had the money for it, they funded it, and then they slowly took away the funding, and now they make it, it's the law, the, the, not the law, but the policy or code, is now that the money has to funnel through the district, so it went from the state pays it to the, the person would just give them the money, and most of the time the people didn't pay it, to now it has to funnel through the district, through the payroll system, and to the mentor, that's why you're seeing it this way, but this is not the first one that's been on the resolutions this year, we've had a couple of these.
Yeah, right.
I was gonna say, we, there always was a P involved, but that's why it's on.
It was teacher to teacher, you were just thinking-
Yeah, it always was, and I run hearing about it and all of it.
So, the cents up to the, in the payroll, so you get the exact twenty-five dollars from the mentees' check?
It's per month.
Per month.
Per month, and then, and then you put it in the mentors with the, uh-
Yeah, it's actually per peg, so it's fifty dollars of security.
And after you take out their stuff, they got their stuff there, they get like their forty-nine cents.
Yeah.
So, actually, so this is, this is accurate.
It's five hundred dollars.
Okay, so this is inaccurate in terms of twenty-five per month.
It doesn't say per peg?
It says per month.
Per month?
Do they only get paid once a month?
And it says a hundred dollars total?
And you know, you know why this is twenty-five, it's 'cause she's part-time, so, she's a part-time teacher, they pay half, it's, it's, it's not ours, it's the state, they come up with the stuff, you know, so, that's why, that was the, and then she'll have, she'll have to do it again next year, but because you don't know that the person will still be here, you just renew this next year, if that makes sense.
Okay.
So, I'm taking my stance against this on that.
Well, you're correcting the teacher.
That's the next thing.
Don, I know you guys had a personnel meeting, I think, although brief, right, um, was there anything, or not at this?
Well, we have, you know, we've been, uh, the budget committee, uh, the finance committee and personnel is the same people, so, we've had a couple of sidebar conversations, so we're gonna have a more formal personnel committee, uh, what was the date, Mark, I don't remember the exact date coming up.
April third.
Whenever our next finance could be, yeah.
First Tuesday.
Yeah, but we, we did spend a little time on, uh, we had a, a brief discussion on succession planning.
About that too.
Um, which is, uh, uh, really critical, um, you know, making sure, you know, how do we replace key people in the, uh, in the district if they retire, if they, uh, they leave, so, and also developing our own, our own people, uh, we felt that was, uh, very important, and I know, well, Steve's got a, uh, like leadership, what's like the official name, leadership academy?
Demble Leadership Academy.
Demble Leadership Academy to, uh, identify and develop people, so we talked about that, um, and, uh, we also talked about, you know, the bench strength too in the, in the maintenance department, which I, which I referred to, uh, earlier, so, uh, and the other thing we briefly discussed was a, uh, a paid for performance program that will start to, uh, it's certainly not gonna be something that's gonna be done in one, one meeting, but to get that on the table and begin a discussion on that, which we'll share with the board.
That's very good and exciting stuff, good to hear. Alright, uh, Mariana, um, you have a couple things here, if you don't mind, according to next meeting, and then, I know you just thought of curriculum minutes, I think, yesterday, right? Was it yesterday?
Friday.
Friday maybe?
Oh, boy.
Alright, so Friday, if you don't mind.
At the next meeting, I, I-
By the twenty-third?
Yeah, on the twenty-third, there'll be workshops and expenses possibly, and the nursing service plan and the twelve-month holiday list, I have to say, I was surprised to see both of these when I received my agenda this week, 'cause they weren't on the committee discussion, and, and all my time on the board, they've always been discussed in committee before the first floor, when do these have to be sent, since we already have a committee meeting?
We don't have to do, we don't have to do the, the twelve-month, these things, the holidays?
Yeah, and the, well, yes, you're right, that one we don't have to do, when does the nursing service plan have to be sent?
Not sure, I think it might say it on, I know the doctor reviewed it and signed off, the nurses reviewed it and signed off, which committee did you bring this through, though?
Instruction programs, since that's the person who will be.
We can put, we can bring it back to committee, we just weren't sure, you know, what, which one you would bring this through, 'cause it, it was really more about, you know, medical stuff, but if you want, we could pull it off, you put it through the committee, uh, probably like that.
You put it on the agenda.
It's always, in my ten years on the board, it's always come through correctly, it's always been on a committee meeting agenda.
So, we can, uh-
I'm just curious, if it needs to go, if it needs to go, it needs to go, and make sure everybody reads it.
Well, it goes to the year, is this for next year, or is this?
This for this year, current year.
So, we don't, we're acting on that one?
I don't, if you, if, if you guys are strong about bringing it through a committee, we'll bring it through committee, even if, even if it's late, we'll still, you know, that's our priority.
So, um-
And yes, you're correct, we did have a meeting, what?
Don't we have one that's viable today?
I, I'm not really sure, I mean, the nursing service, it always comes through this time of year, and I thought it was sort of, I mean, it obviously goes through, I have part of it in front of me, you know, how many students are seen for certain things, and usually it's a plan for what they wanna have put through in the budget, if there's a request for more time, it's always this in the nursing service, as far as I remember, because of that.
Your question though, is it, is it always fourteen, fifteen, instead of fifteen, sixteen?
Yeah, I mean, the, I don't understand how we could be planning for the past.
It's just, it's just the way the dates are when the county wants your stuff back, I don't think it's any more than that, and the state, the doctor has to review it, the doctor has to sign it, he signed this, you know?
Yeah, I, I saw that. He signed it last month, February sixth.
Right.
So, it could have come through committee. Alright, so, we did meet on March second, um, and I did send out minutes to the board, but for those of you in the audience, we, the district is looking at, we currently have, and I came up, uh, in some of the conversation before, an intervention and referral service plan, which is to give interventions to students that are struggling but are not classified students, we're looking at and put together actually a very large committee of people in the district to look at a different model, which is called RTI, Response to Intervention, which is used in other states and here in New Jersey, so, they're looking into that, I won't get into the details of it, another thing we discussed around, um, our special education programs is, we're working on strengthening our applied behavioral analysis programs that, um, dovetail with some of our programs, uh, we talked about PARC, but you heard enough about PARC tonight, I think, we heard the good news about how things are going, um, we talked about, um, Teachers College Summer Institute, which is a wonderful opportunity for teachers in the district to firsthand get training on readers and writers workshop from Columbia University, we've been moving the readers and writers workshop model now for, I'm gonna say at least four or five years, and this is gonna help with teachers that need more strengthening in it, um, the reason why you'll see it on our agenda for more, or maybe it's not just maybe staff that wanna be, you know, exceptional at it, um, they're on the agenda, although we don't know, because we're New Jersey and because it's Columbia University, close, and it's a global, um, workshop, they don't give New Jersey people first pick, so sometimes we're the last ones to find out, and it can be not enough time to get it on the agenda, so we're gonna approve them, even though we don't even know if they've been accepted into the program, so in the end, we may only pay for one teacher to go, even though you'll see, I think, six or seven on the list. Um, we also spoke about summer enrichment, but Mr. Forte already discussed that, which is the, the starting up enrichment classes for people in Demble, or people who have not been in Demble, they choose to come to our town to take classes or things like that.
Thank you.
So, do you guys want this thing to come through the committee, so that I can pull it off and give it to, um, Sandy to bring through her committee?
We can do that, just to be consistent, and if it's a checkoff, then it's a checkoff, if you guys review it, you review it, if not, then we can move it in the, uh, March, or I'm sorry, the April meeting. Cool. Operations, Carlos.
Policy.
Uh, I was policy, I'm sorry. Policy, you moved policy to there, buddy. Carlos.
Should we take an action on it?
Uh, no.
So, at the next meeting, we'll move, um, policy and regulation, maybe six hundred, for the first reading.
Thank you, and then, uh-
So, I have a comment on it, which you know I do, 'cause I said, uh, yeah, I'm sure that's why you're voting policy. Everybody on this board knows, I feel very strongly about policy considering it's, what, like, our number one job?
Set policy.
To set policy and make sure the district is well-run, so, and I was the one that tabled this off a previous agenda, because I asked for it to go as the current policy dictates, to be reviewed by people, they only reviewed the policy, not the regulation, and I spoke at that meeting on tape about the changes I'd like to see in it, and as far as I know, this also wasn't on the curriculum agenda, although I guess it should have been, so, um, I'd like to make a change in the wording, which I said at that meeting, and I put in writing in the email, so I don't know how you wanna deal with it, I don't know, 'cause I know nobody wants to be out another night, I don't want to be either.
Well, we would be only approving it for the first reading, so essentially, we could at our next meeting-
No, no, it's, oh yeah, I guess you're right, it's back on for first reading.
Right, so we could at our first, our next meeting, we can move it, we can hear your recommendations, and then have those changes made, uh, for the second reading and adoption at that point, right?
Yeah.
Nameless.
Yes, it is.
Uh, Carlos, operations.
So, apologies for not having my, uh, meeting in town, but, um, just, um, we already spoke about most of the stuff that would be in it, right, so, um, the budget items, um, the two-tier bus is gonna leave to, to Steve to handle, um, and his comments at the end, 'cause it's a standing agenda item, uh, the ESIP proposals, John covered, the oil at Valley View, uh, I forget how much we went into that here, but the bulk of that money that's required for the oil remediation has to do with, um, making sure that the building is stable, when they dig underground to get to where the oil is to, to take out the contaminated soil, um, we spoke about the, uh, Demble Township Green Sustainability Committee, and their donation and cash flow donation, it is, uh, company's time to install it, and then, the only other thing that we have, which is on the agenda, is the five oh one Open Akim, the old board office.
Excellent, you wanna talk about that a little bit?
Sure, so, um, we decided we were going to, you know, well, the committee was recommending that we move forward with, uh, the sale of that property through a bid process, which was going to begin to, um, was it September we decided on?
September first?
Honor about September first.
So, essentially, the committee is recommending that we move forward with the sale of property, uh, there's a lot of hurdles and hoops and whatnot that we need to jump through, I, I recall, right, to go through the bid process, it's not just-
I guess to give time.
No, but there's, I thought there's a couple of things that we need to do, the estate to sell, properties, is there?
Our loral handle, all that.
Yeah, so there's a couple of things, but-
So, once, once the board decides on when you want it to go to bid, we will have our attorney work on all the legal part of it.
So, at our next meeting, we'll be voting on whether or not to take the committee's recommendation, uh, to move forward, uh, with, uh, selling that piece of property, right?
That's correct, with the building intact, the way it is, the property with the building.
Property as is.
Yeah. Property as is.
Now, we put all the, uh, paperwork together for the bid, um, we're gonna have a, a minimum, we're, we're not, we're not compelled to accept the highest bid, it's below what we think property's worth.
I think we set a minimum.
So, there's some stipulations that I'm sure we can talk through and go-
Yeah, well, I think that's really, really key, 'cause, you know, you don't wanna sell for seventy-five dollars.
Well, the strategy is to-
Well, according to the attorneys, you, you have a minimum bid to protect you, because if you don't have a minimum bid, and somebody bids ten thousand dollars, you have to sell it to them for ten thousand dollars.
We gotta make sure that that's up, we have a bid's iron plaid that we have, we have a discussion tonight, but whatever minimum is that we want, that, that's to set up the concrete, so we don't, we don't-
We have a right of refugio, at least.
And so that, uh, again, that vote would be on the twenty-third, uh, which is our next meeting, and then, uh, essentially, honor before, honor around, I've gotta rephrase that.
Honor about.
Honor about, September first.
My question would be, would you publish in the agenda that goes online before the meeting, the actual date, or are we gonna on the fly fill in that dotted line?
The honor before?
Yeah, right now it's a blank, it doesn't, in committee, we discussed September first, but I mean, is that why it's blank, 'cause we're gonna on the fly decide date?
Well, I, I think that, uh-
Will it be published so people know?
Well, we can discuss it now, if you like.
I think it's 'cause the decision was gonna be made on the twenty-third of when you sell it.
Or I get the bid back, you're saying, we're correct.
So, I guess we can put it out to bid.
What is it?
Put it out to bid.
I would say, put it out with the committee recommendation, and then if people feel strongly wanna change it, through the discussion, we can change it on the fly.
So, uh, the agenda will then, I guess, reflect, John, if you don't mind, September first, two thousand and fifteen, has the, uh, has the date on there, uh, to Carlos's point, and thank you, Mariana, as well, the, uh, that evening, if, uh, someone feels the urge to move it sooner rather than later, um, that can be made as well? Right?
Sure.
Sure.
Thank you.
Just as a point of information, whatever date goes on there, that was to go out to bid, then the bid period would be a certain length of time, and the sale date would be past that, just for clarity.
Correct. Correct. Thank you, anything else there, Carlos?
Uh, no, sir.
Barb, what do you got for finance, and I know your committee report is essentially what we move on, I guess, right?
Yeah, um, at the next meeting, we'll vote to move items one through seven, as listed on your agenda, um, there's nothing on the budget about the Open Akim house, but, you know, I guess, you know, maybe to wait for the public part, but I'm struggling with the idea of-
There's a proportion of them.
Well, I mean, we didn't, I'm just wondering, the renovation option, like, a realistic alternative to, I feel like it is part of the history and everything, we can talk about it at the end, but-
Yeah, so what, um, yeah, well-
I, I would have a hard time accepting the resolution next week, um, but it is, I'm only one of four, I mean, one of seven, so, that's, nothing for finance.
Alright, so, uh, good as far as committee reports, essentially, we went through, um, correspondence, uh, discussion items, we made board of that office, uh, this might as well be a good point, do you have any comments about, or questions, Barb, about, uh, board of that office?
Yeah, no, I mean, I have, I guess they're a couple of years old, but I do feel like with trailers as our historical reference, um, we, there are economical means of modifying, correcting, adding behind, my first action item, I guess, before the vote would be, what does the office staff want for a permanent, I always felt that where they are now is like they were missed, they were displaced from their home, I mean, literally, it looks like a home, but, and what would, like, the original five, I guess, have the, the central office staff needs a permanent solution, which, you know, I can't help but tie that together in my head, I do think the house is perfect for that, for privacy and what have you, for data storage, we should be going into cloud for storage, my husband thinks we're crazy with paper records, you know, he's an IT guy too, so, now I just don't talk to him about this stuff, because he has an opinion on everything, um, but I guess, uh, the numbers that we saw were not that unreasonable for renovating and or, um, putting a modular behind, um, making it usable, so, I'm struggling with that, I'd probably vote no next meeting, just for the record.
And so, yeah, if I can just apply for a second, um, so obviously, the decision didn't come easily, right, it isn't, you know, somewhat historical value, but if we were to update it and make it into an office, it would lose all of its appeal in terms of historical value, 'cause you wouldn't be able to see the history of it, but you wouldn't even be able to recognize the building, as it is, from the renovations that look like have been done to it already, based on the pictures that Steve had, had sent out when he was removing all the file cabinets, you can't tell if that was even a schoolhouse before, right, so if you're gonna restore it for, for use of something else, and then that's just gonna negate the whole historical value of it, right, and again, you know, that was, that was my opinion, and, and that's just from various conversations that pan on, um, and in terms of putting a modular behind it, you know, you, you still have an ice orb, so you need to have to do something with that, and we discussed that already, that we have plenty of space in our other, you know, land, where you could add modules to it if you needed board, board space, alright, so I think that was our backup plan, and the point eight-six acres that we had there just really wasn't of much useful value to us.
Any other comments about the board of Ed Office five oh one Open Akim property?
Yeah, I, I would like to say something real quick, so, I, I know there's been a lot of discussion over this building, we've had a lot of discussion in the public, as well as in our committees, about what to do with it, um, I think that we need to make a decision moving forward, and I, being in the B and G committee, we discussed it a lot on the options that we had in front of us, um, in my opinion, the renovation, uh, the cost was exorbitant, um, I, I know there were some different figures from years ago, different figures from now, but, uh, like Mr. Forte had said, even if you took our figures from now, which are one point five million and cut them in half, I still think it's the exorbitant cost, and I'm not sure how we're gonna eat that without going to a referendum, um, and I also feel that there's, um, a lot of disc, okay, there's a lot of, uh, discussion over, so what do we do with the building if we decide to move forward, and, you know, just for the public's information, you know, we have to go to bid for it unless there's another government agency that will- And I also feel that there's, um, a lot of disc, okay, there's a lot of discussion over, so what do we do with the building if we decide to move forward? And, you know, just for the public's information, you know, we have to go to bid for it unless there's another government agency that would be interested in, in getting involved with the building. And, uh, so we cannot sell it to a private company for below the value, we can't just sell it to somebody like Mariana if she wants to buy it for fifty thousand dollars, we couldn't do that. Um, so there's.
For the record, you are not asking to buy the piece of property.
I am, I have my own rundown house I'm trying to keep up with.
It's all Open Aki too.
Yes, which is also not, one house on Open Aki is enough for me.
But we've looked at a lot of options, is what I'm trying to say, um, and the options are, are, are not, um, from what I can see, uh, either not budgetary or not feasible. So, um, I, I think that this, um, I, I would not have supported it if we had said we were gonna demolish the building. I think that at least from the historic standpoint, we're not demolishing the building. We're giving anybody the opportunity on a, on a sealed bid to basically buy the building and do what they wish with it. So, that's just my two cents on it. I know we talk about it a lot, I don't want to belabor it, but, um, but I just wanted to kind of at least get that out.
Thank you.
And like Steve said before, it's irresponsible of us to keep that building the way it is, without doing that to itself.
Yeah, and just to add on to what Carlos said before, the historic value, when you walk inside that building, if you close your eyes and you put me inside that building and opened your eyes, it looks like you're stuck in nineteen seventy-three. I mean, it did not have any historical value inside that building, being inside it, and I was shocked when I went inside it, because I looked from the outside and I see the historic value, and I go inside and it's gone. I mean, it's, it's in, it's in rough shape, and, uh, it, it, it doesn't have any of that historic value.
Comments? Anyone else regards to the board office? Um, trailers, uh, we sort of discussed already.
Trailers were discussed.
Two-tier busing?
Two-tier busing, right now, I'm not in favor of it, just based on the information I'm getting, even though I think it's the right thing to do and the right thing to move the district forward. Two-tier busing would basically mean that the middle school would be on a, on a schedule, and the two elementary schools be on the same schedule, so that it would force the middle school start time about a half an hour later than it is now, which I think would be a great thing for our kids to, to have an extra half hour of sleep, considering some of them are on the bus as early as, what, six forty?
Twenty-seven, yeah.
Yeah, six forty. So, those, those students that are waiting on the bus for six forty would be moved to about six-ten, maybe six fifteen.
Seven-ten.
Seven fifteen. So, um, I still think it's the right thing to do. I'm just not comfortable with the way it's playing out right now, in terms of our staff viewing it. So we are going to have our consultant that we use, Jordan Transportation, take a look at it, and, uh, so for right now, I just can't recommend it based on the facts I have.
Well, we've obviously got some time, um, and we can move on there.
The last thing is tied to the two-tier busing, so, um, it's the same thing. So right now, the start times for the schools remain the same. If, if we can move on some of these changes, we will, but my feeling right now is we're gonna need another year to really plan this out, so that it's done properly. It's going to be a little bit, you know, it's gonna be a hot-button issue. Some parents are gonna be upset, because it's gonna affect them in a certain way, like in other words, you know, that half hour, now I can't get my kid on the bus. So there will be some things like that, and, and, but we have to remember that we bus based on what's good, the best for our students, not necessarily what's the best and most convenient thing for the rest of the town. So we have to play all this out and get this out there to everybody, and I think we're gonna need another year to, to deal with that. It goes against my brain to want to push something off another year, but I think it's important.
Okay, okay. Um, other, any other, any reports? Oh, John, good.
Okay, I just want to go over, because I want to make sure that we, we are all on the same page, back to the budget, okay? So, I, I have the numbers at the top, reduced by the eighty-five thousand, so I want to read that into the record, if you will, or whatever, for everybody.
Oh, green range.
Yeah, well, actually in, in the resolution, so the resol, the resolution now, we'll read, where it says general fund, we're, we're gonna reduce the eighty-five thousand out of there, so I just wanted to get these numbers to out now, tonight. So it's gonna be twenty-nine thousand, one thirty-nine, one eighty. Special revenue, five thirty-four, one forty-two. Debt service, five sixty-one, two hundred. So the amount that you'll see on the resolution will be thirty million, two thirty-four, five twenty-two.
Let's check that.
Thirty million two, right, okay, so.
Now, we've already moved that with the, uh, the numbers that we stated before. Um, from a clarity perspective, do we need to remove that, although it's a, obviously, a reduction, um, do we need to remove it and re-vote on it, because it's kind of a different amount?
Well, if you want to, yes, we can do that.
Just from a, I rather, I think that might be the more prudent way to go, just in case.
Yes.
So, I think, Carlos, you moved it earlier, would you mind moving it again with those corrected numbers?
I have a little data. I'd like to move, uh, under finance, item number one, uh, with the corrected numbers that John just put forward.
Barb, you said it before, would you be willing to second it again?
Yes, I'll second.
All right, so again, just from a, uh, the general fund number should be twenty-nine million, one hundred thirty-nine thousand, one hundred eighty dollars. Uh, the special revenue and debt service numbers wouldn't change. The final number would be thirty million, two hundred thirty-four thousand, five hundred twenty-two dollars now.
Correct.
So a reduction of eighty-five thousand dollars.
Right.
Should it be a reduction of eighty-five or sixty-five thousand dollars?
Sixty-five thousand dollars. The withdrawal is eighty-five thousand dollars. That's why I wanted to double-check it, everything before. And I probably should have stopped, it just took five minutes to do the numbers when we were doing it. And I apologize for that.
So then the next line, be it further resolved, there should be raised for that, is where the general fund debt number spread?
Correct. All the rest of them are fine, and the eight, and again, the hundred and fifty thousand becomes eighty-five thousand, okay? So.
So this is a, a reduction in terms of general fund dollars of sixty-five thousand dollars, right?
Correct.
And the overall amount of budget projected for two thousand fifteen, sixteen would be less than sixty-five thousand dollars.
Right, that's thirty million, two thirty-four, five twenty-two.
Are any other questions on that before we vote?
In, in the general fund, will we go over again, or are you okay?
I have those numbers, so does it affect how much they pay per household?
No, none of that. It's just bookkeeping stuff, and I wanted to get, to get it out there now that it's less.
As for the record, so, those numbers should be the same.
Yes.
All right, if there's any other questions, then get down.
Okay. Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Capella?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
No.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Duarte?
Yes.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Snap on.
Yes, so, and one more time, what we'll do for the public's sake is we'll get this going online, it'll be uploaded in the next couple of days. It'll have the corrected amounts, um, that were just moved, and again, the, uh, I guess the highlighted items of things that were included in the budgets.
And this presentation will be on there, too.
And the presentation will be on there as well, minus you, right?
And the YouTube.
I do know, it'll be on there as well. All right, so, anything in other, in terms of committee reports, anything else to discuss?
Dave, I have, I have two things.
Go ahead, Tom.
I'm not gonna go into great length, but I sent everyone the, uh, committee report for the technology committee, so if anyone has any questions on that. Also, I'll remind everybody tomorrow night here at Valley View, the PTA is gonna be having a meet and greet for Seth Quinlan, um, at seven o'clock, I believe.
He's a new VP.
Yeah, new VP.
Check. Anyone else? Nope. And after you said, we'll open up for the second portion of, of public comments at ten oh eight. Please step up, state your name and record, or name and trust for the record once again.
Let's go, let's go in, Tom. As in, when we sell the five-one Open Aki, that money then goes into capital reserve?
Wait, Tom, I'm sorry. We sell, when we sell Open Aki, we'll go with the capital reserve. If the board.
The money will go into the general revenue, miscellaneous revenue, and if the board passes a resolution at the end of the year to put it in the capital reserve, yes, it would.
I, I would resume that's what the board would do.
Yes.
And in terms of the capital reserves and the, the maintenance reserves, there's nothing in this that says how much money we have in the reserve right now. That might be a useful number to have in here, so I don't want to say that, oh, you can use it in fifteen, now we're using that to ninety or whatever. I don't know how much money we have left over for future use. It might be good to have just the capital reserves and the maintenance.
After those withdrawals are made, what's remaining in the accounts?
What is now, and then after we, we'll add some more, and what goes in.
We can add that.
That might be used.
Sure.
Thank you. Any other comments? Please, step up to the podium, your name and address for the record, please.
Charles Bond, seventy-three, Mount Pleasant, Terre Saint-Denis. In, in documents that you have, you have a breakout of the various expenditures in detail, and really saying what these large punks of money are.
Everyone else has a, a board binder, uh, budget binder, excuse me, that's been periodically updated based off of changes from state revenue or state, um, amounts to changes and recommendations from the finance committee. Is that available at board office and public?
Not, not until the final adoption.
So it's really hard for the public to make a comment on these numbers, you know, what they're made up of, isn't it?
The, the budget is available at the final adoption for the public to review. We'll be putting up the updates, but these budgets that we have here are drafts. They're not in, they're not for the public. We can ha, produce a condensed budget for the public, but it's not to be, it can be examined once it's advertised. By, once it's approved by the county, the budget in its state format can be, uh, viewed by the public then.
Right, and that's before final adoption by the board?
That's correct.
So what we can do, I'm sorry, I was gonna say, so, uh, essentially what we can do is, once that has been approved by the county, uh, we, we have to put out a, an advertisement of that?
Yeah, yeah. Well, once the county approves the budget, then we have permission to advertise it. It goes in the newspaper, and it has a lot of line item detail for, more specifically than just this general. And that's derived from the state, uh, budget itself. It's, it goes in the paper, and then, once it's in the paper, it's available for the public to come and look at, definitely.
I'd also like to comment on your YouTube taping of the, of the meetings. I think it's very beneficial. I think cameras located in a better spot this time than behind the person that's speaking.
Yes.
And then, sometimes I did find, in listening to them, that the volume was not so great, you know, from all the participants. If you've got that solved, then I think the YouTube thing is very beneficial to the public.
I think it's a work in progress, and I think the fact that we've had, I think on average, seventy to plus people watching per meeting, I think is, is an important thing. I think generally speaking, even so far, we've had a number, more folks in our audience than typical. Uh, but, the last time I remember, seventy people in the audience that came for any occasion other than, um, you know, a big ceremony or, or something budget-related is, I mean, it wasn't, it was years ago, as far as I remember it. So I think it's helpful as well. Thank you.
One of the, we do need to look at a new sound for this, the PA system. It'll help, it'll help pick up the sound better. Our PA system isn't great. We're working on that.
Is this system that you're using right now, is that going to a tape deck so that you're recording it beyond what the YouTube is?
No, well, we used to record audio.
That's what I mean.
But now our new policy states that we record video, so we only, we only record the video now.
As, as somebody who has listened to the audio?
Yes.
It's worse than the YouTube.
So, so it was even bad, it's not worse.
No, it's worse.
I've done that, so I know that you're probably, right? And secondly, and lastly, I think that, um, the schedule that you have for getting the board office, if it's in September, as you're proposing at this point, I think that would be fair for the public to have some kind of reaction to it.
Sure.
If you move it up, then I think it would be encumbering for the public to try and do it.
Well, at the moment, uh, the resolution is gonna read, uh, that the bid wouldn't start till September first.
On or about?
On or about.
That's just if it's a Monday or a weekend.
But essentially, that, I don't, I don't want to speak with the committee, too. Uh, I know that the thought was to give an opportunity for the public or whoever to at least have some advance notice. I do appreciate that, thank you very much. Thank you.
Can I ask a follow-up question to that?
Sure.
So, John, um, not being able to share these binders with the public, is that a John DePaul rule, or is that done by somebody else? I'm asking that, because I'm gonna be asked.
Well, it's not, it's not my rule. It, this is a draft budget document, and, um, again, the pub, it's not a public document yet until it's adopted and approved for advertisement. Once it's approved for advertisement, then the public can view it.
So, so my point was, it's not us that's dictating that, that's what's dictated to us.
Yes.
And for a little bit more clarity as well, um, after the, we get it back from the county, essentially, uh, Steve, we'll be going on a, a road tour with board members as well, some board members, uh, to make some presentations to the town council, to some groups, um, that would, uh, otherwise not necessarily be able to see it firsthand. Uh, just, I, I think, just, um, an important thing to note, that when we moved to a, um, non-public voting budget, one of the things that the board at the time, and I would imagine now as well, was important, was that, um, we continue to do that thing, get out, speak to the public, make sure, make sure we try to get out to as many groups as we can. And I might, had talked to, uh, I think the last meeting or two meetings ago, about going onto even a greater list of, of, uh, groups to try and get that word out there, so that would continue as well.
I was gonna hold off till board comments, but since everybody's talking about the budget.
Sure.
At the point in time when we can publicly have it, in the past, the board used to have two full binders sitting at the back of the thing, so people could sit and look through it at meetings, even if they couldn't make it out to the board office to come and look at them. Can we do that again?
I don't see why not. Yeah, I think it was a good tradition that it started.
It, it, yeah.
Yes, it was the board's, you know, push towards transparency, they had it sitting out there for people to look at.
And as long as it was.
It was probably the state-formatted budget.
It was this whole binder.
That whole binder?
Two of them at the back of the room we have.
Okay.
I don't know if we were following the rules, but I know we had it out there.
You remember the binder back there.
Okay. So, well, I'll look into it, and make sure we can do it.
Got it, great.
Any other comments from the public at all? So I'll close for public comment, that's ten sixteen, we'll open for board comment now as well. See hand raised? Oh, just a question ahead. Um, board comments, seeing none?
No, I got one, just one question for John. Um, in the budget materials we did give out, um, do we include eventually, you know, what I would consider balance sheet items in terms of some of these fund balances, and is that generally given to the public, or is that more kind of behind the scenes?
I'm not sure exactly.
Like these fund balances that he was asking about, in terms of, you know, what the scale was.
Yeah, and that, well, yeah, and that's, that's available, yeah.
That's actually, the information that you asked for is actually on our website now, on the state user public budget.
From last year.
From last year.
From last year, right.
Okay.
I was gonna say, I mean, and in the past, once we got to the state-approved version that you can publicly put out there, and I know we've come away from pathfinders, although I know we also put in a huge dollar amount in mailing costs in the budget, so. Are we going to do something? We used to have more pie charts that talked about how the money would be used.
Oh, yes, definitely. For, for the, the final budget, we have started working on that.
But will it just be available here and wherever you take the roadshow, or are we gonna make an effort? I know people say that it just goes in the garbage, but.
We'll post it online, too, you mean?
Yeah, but I mean, we're not gonna mail to everyone information, or put it in the neighbor news, or however we do.
We should put out a press release to the neighbor news on the budget, maybe not the whole press, I mean, I could give them the whole thing. Don't want to print it all, but, yeah.
Okay, but no Pathfinder with just all budget information going home to everybody, is what you're saying?
That's not my intention right now, unless the board decides.
I'm just trying to find out what our intention is, because I thought we were doing budget one-on-ones and two-on-ones, and we didn't, so I just want to know what we're doing.
I, I would think that, um, you know, where we're at today, in doing the presentations, which I would imagine includes some of the pie charts and so on, on the, you know, I love to use the word roadshow, by the way.
Oh, I'm sorry, I went with this previous superintendents and VAs to, it is, you pick up your stuff, you pack it out, you lay out all your papers, you put your screen up, and it's, uh, you know.
Yeah, I, I think that, um.
It's a bomb and a nice app.
So it is, and I think it's an important thing, I think we ought to read to that. Um, I think putting it online, I think the fact that it'll be, uh, uh, viewable via, or the presentation will be view, uh, viewable via YouTube, um.
Yeah, and if we could get something in the newspaper, saying the whole presentation is available and.
Online and, and through, via press release certainly, and maybe some coverage as well.
Because when we put it on our website, if you're not a parent that actively goes there, you don't know.
Well, well, I do, I do, um, put the links in the Friday folder, so make people back to.
Let's say you don't have kids in this school, you may not read the Friday folder.
Sure, and then we put it in the newspaper.
Yeah, and I mean, we used to actually go into the senior center and post, you know, flyers on their bulletin boards, ask, you know, through their proper channels, ask to have them up there, so they would have information.
Yeah, I, I think we want to continue to try and do as much, uh, publication of it, and publicizing of it, and presentation of it as possible. I think I agree.
We, we also want to shift to the twenty-first century, too. We don't want to present to one person. We want to do things a little bit more modern. We want to. We want to, we purchased a program that can capture our voices while we do a presentation like this. So when the presentation is done, we will publish that, and we'll put that out via email, through the newspaper, and publicize that, because, you know, this whole idea of video in the meeting is just a modern meeting. And to do these, to pretend that it's some kind of transparency by going to a bunch of meetings and talking to one person, it doesn't, to me, it doesn't have the benefit as it does if I, if I put something out there and 200 people watch it, as opposed to one person going to a meeting, I feel more, I feel like I've reached a better audience in that, in that manner than I would if I went to give a presentation, I saw it one person. So I think we need to do a combination of them. I think we need to go to the town council, and we need to go to the, we do ours here, we do the town council, and we do the senior center. If we want to do one more, or we invite everybody in, and then we do these kinds of things, where we get, you know, 200 hits on something different, where people are actually watching it, instead of going and having one person there. That's, that's my two cents for this.
Any other comments about that? We need an executive session?
Yes.
Mike, you want to move us to executive? I would like to move us to executive, convene an executive session in accordance with Section 8 of the Open Public Meetings Act. The purpose of this closed session will be to discuss.
Negotiations and legal.
Negotiations and legal, thank you. Minutes of this session will be made available to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists.
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
No.
Opposed, you don't agree? Second, continue an expedition as well.
Any objections?
Subsections, huh? All right, so we, we're going to take a 30-second break before the executive, and then we're going to go to executive. You're not voting? Don't go to, no, there's.
There's no voting after an executive session.
So move as quickly as possible.
This executive session.
Last week, about the condition in the room.
Cindy, you have that off?
And now I will make a motion during the meeting.
Time's up, 10:43, we are out of the executive session. Do we have a motion to come to close the meeting?
Yeah, I did. Make a motion to close the meeting.
Second. Carlos, second one, all on favor?
Hi.
A, a, opposed? Subsections? All right, it is now 10:43, 10:44. The meeting is closed.